We are here for the El Segundo City Council meeting, October 19th, 6:00 PM. We're conducting this evening's meeting as a hybrid. Council is back in the dais and the public is on via Zoom. Chamber is currently closed to the public with the exception of special presentations and public communications. And I just want to remind people that you can go to Channel 3 on Spectrum or Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, or you can go to YouTube, El Segundo TV, to view the meeting. So without further ado, Madam Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Persnick?
Here.
Mayor Potam Pimental?
Here.
Mayor Boiles?
Here.
All right, thank you. So we're going to have our city clerk lead the invocation, followed by Councilmember Giroux leading the pledge of allegiance. So if you could all please rise.
We need to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. Us trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well.
Thank you, Clerk Weaver, and thank you, Councilmember Giroux. So we've got a couple special presentations, and we are thrilled and honored to have past Fire Chief Chris Donovan here for a recently retired with his family members. We've got Chris, Jamie, Ava, and Connor. Thank you so much for being here in chamber today. And I know we've got several people that would like to address retired Chief Donovan. And we've got this incredible plaque that we're going to give to Chief Donovan as well. And his career goes way back, and I'm going to turn over to you in a minute, Mr. Mittnick, because I'm sure you'll want to say some words. But, you know, we're fortunate to have Chris from 2016 through 2021. You have fundamentally changed the fire department for the good. We're on the fire accreditation process now that you fought hard for. And I want we just, on the council, thank you for everything you've done, and you've got a great successor in the first Fire Chief, first female Fire Chief of the South Bay, Dean Ali. So thank you for everything you've done, Chief, and with your legacy here in El Segundo. And Mr. Mittnick, would you like to say some words as well?
You're really going to do this? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a housekeeping item for our city clerk. There are a number of combinations and other documents, correct, from other agencies? I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, I think there's some people that are going to be on Zoom that would like to address Chief Donovan, like Mayor Pullen Miles and some others.
Okay, okay, very good. So again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is one of those days where we have mixed feelings. On the one hand, we're very happy that Chris and his family gets him back, and he's going to be able to spend some quality time with his loved ones and make that transition to the next chapter in your life. I get the honor to be the city manager while you're retiring and get to say some nice words. And I thought, what should we say and how should we say it? And I remembered, I kept this edition of the El Segundo Herald from about a year ago this time. And there was a story here. On the front page, it reads, "El Segundo Fire Chief Chris Donovan Loves His Job." One year almost to the week. You remember this? You have like 30 copies at your house? First paragraph reads, "El Segundo Fire Chief Chris Donovan has finished, has flourished in his career in the fire service spanning more than three decades, and still relishes his service to the community and his firefighters. Often working seven days a week, spending nights, several nights a week away from his home, his wife, his family, bunking overnight in his dorm in Fire Station 1." And then the last paragraph reads, it's a great story. And the last paragraph reads, ultimately, and this is a quote from Chris, "Ultimately to me, it's about serving others." He said this while summing up his devotion to firefighting and his leadership style. Quote, "Providing help for those in need. I really want to help people. There is no better career than the fire service to provide that level of care and compassion and make a difference to people's lives." So I can go on and talk about three decades of fire service? There it is, right there. And Chris, you started in the fire profession about the same time I started on my side of the local government business, and it's been an honor and a real pleasure to work with you. And on behalf of the executive team, all the department heads, we have a little card for you. We're taking you out for a nice dinner coming up. You know about that, so I have that for you. I also have a bag of goodies so you don't forget us. You know, really cool things, a really nice El Segundo beach towel, mugs, cups, mementos, city lapel pins and that type of thing. You're a quality guy, and I want to also mention, he did exemplary work for this department. And proof is in the pudding. Go look at the two stations, how much nicer they look, the apparatus, the equipment that you were able to secure. A real advocate for the firefighters themselves in terms of their, the tools they needed for their work, their compensation. The whole time I was here, this gentleman was a real advocate for the fire service. He was also an exceptional team player with the executive team. He carried out council's direction. Maybe a little too much, though, but you were a very good advocate for this community, this city, this organization. And I'm honored to hand this to you and just simply say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure.
Here's copy 31.
All right, thank you.
And I know, Chief, we have some other people on Zoom that would like to say some words to you. Mayor Pullen Miles, who's also the field representative for Assembly Member Autumn Burke. Robert, would you like to say some words? We can't hear you yet.
Okay, I'm always on mute.
You're good now.
Don't worry about it, I'm on mute even at home. A little joke. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to be here tonight to recognize Chief Donovan for all of his good work in the city of El Segundo, and not just El Segundo, but LA County. You know, I was looking at, Chief, I was looking at your resume, and it talks about the 34 years of being in the fire service and the years that you spent in the city of El Segundo. And man, you just have a lustrous career, and I just want to thank you on behalf of Assemblywoman Autumn Burke for all you have done for our community here in LA County and also as city of El Segundo. I mean, you put in a lot of hours, I mean, I can understand. I spent only five years as an EMT, working for an ambulance company. So to put in 34 years of that type of work and dedication away from your family says a lot about how you feel about our community here in LA County and the city of El Segundo. So we do have a certificate for you, Chief. You know what, I'm going to see, I can't see you for some reason, let me see if I can hit another button. Am I supposed to be able to see the chief? I can see myself.
That's a good question, Robert, I'm not sure staff.
Mr. Mayor.
He's there, definitely, we can see your certificate.
I pretend, okay, there we go. Okay, I can see now, I can see now. So I want to present, you know, this is my first time, Chief, presenting a virtual certificate, right? So let me see if I can hold it up there. Can you read it, Chief? No, of course you can't read. I just want to give this to you, Chief, on your, the occasion of your retirement. Chief O'Donovan, in honor of 34 years of devoted fire service experience in Los Angeles County and to the city of El Segundo, and in recognition of your outstanding accomplishment and commitment to our community, congratulations and best wishes on your retirement, signed by the Honorable Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. Congratulations, and you know you'll always be family here in the South Bay and call on us anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert, pull in for you, pull in for you, Miles.
There it is.
Thank you, sir. All right, we also have Matt Johnson, Field Deputy for Supervisor Janice Hahn. Matt, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Boiles, good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. Chief, on behalf of Supervisor Janice Hahn, we'd like to congratulate you on an incredible 34-year career in public service, and certainly the last six years as Fire Chief of El Segundo. We thank you for your service to the county, the residents of LA County, and certainly to El Segundo, and welcome and look forward to working with your first female chief in El Segundo, Chief Lee. So Chief Donovan, congratulations. We have a certificate for you. I think we got you a digital copy, but we'll actually get you the real thing so you can have it to hang on your wall at home and look at it while you're watching the Dodger game, who are up right now. So, go Dodgers.
Go Dodgers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you, sir, really appreciate you being on. Best to Supervisor Hahn. All right. And then staff, do we have Fire Chief Jim Burrell?
Jim is on.
Excellent, yeah. Fire Chief Jim Burrell, Executive Director, LA Area Fire Chiefs Association Regional Training Group. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So I've known Chief Donovan for 30 years, 34 years, his entire career. And it's a privilege to be here tonight with all of you. I've had that opportunity to work with Chief Donovan since he was a firefighter paramedic all the way through chief officer. Operationally, he's always been sound, a leader amongst firefighters across the region, and a leader within the LA area of fire chiefs. Chief Donovan has changed many lives, as the city manager has stated, and all for the positive. He's been a great friend, a mentor to many people, taken people under his wing, and more importantly, you know, I have the privilege to call him my brother. So with that, congratulations to Chief Donovan, his lovely wife, Jamie, Connor, and Ava. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief Burrell. Thank you for your words, much appreciated. All right, I think the, we also, do we have Fire Chief Eric Garcia?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Yes, Eric Garcia with Burbank Fire Department, Fire Chief, as well as the 2021 LA Area Fire Chiefs Association President. And I am just grateful for you allowing me to be on with you this evening. I too, I'd like to echo a lot of the sentiments that have been shared already with regards to Chief Donovan's illustrious career. He truly has been a mentor, as was mentioned by Jim. As a young Fire Chief coming in, Chris welcomed him right in and did not hesitate to help show a young buck a little bit of the ropes and really have an opportunity to be able to bend his ear on some of the challenges that I was facing. So I will be forever grateful for that. But as was also mentioned, Chief Donovan has had a huge impact on the LA area region in itself, not only in the jurisdictions in which he served, but really as the greater LA fire service, as a true, true constant professional and a big advocate for constant improvement. Chief Donovan has brought that to, again, the LA Area Fire Chiefs Association as a board member and to the LA region in itself. Chief Donovan will have a lasting legacy. Again, as mentioned, he's had, made a tremendous impact, again, for the enhancement and advancement, progressive advancement of the fire service. And again, that legacy will truly be, as we always stayed in the fire service, we come in with the intent of wanting to serve others and to do for others. And Chief Donovan has done just that, again, but to that, he's left it better than he founded. And with that, on behalf of the LA Area Fire Chiefs Association, Chief Donovan, we wish you nothing but the best in retirement and congratulations and best of luck, my man. You take care, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Garcia. Okay, we have, I think we should do a, we'll have you say some words, and then we're going to do a presentation, and Mr. Mittnick, yeah? Chief Lee, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple words on behalf of the fire department. Thank you so much for everything that you've brought and improved, and you've set the framework for continuous improvement. And personally, thank you for your mentorship and everything that you've given to me, and I will do my best to carry on what you started here.
Another card, thank you. Well, I'm going to break protocol a little bit, but take my mask off, so. Good evening, Mayor Boiles, members of the city council. This is absolutely special recognition, and I'm very much appreciative of the efforts here tonight. Some of the words from my colleagues got me a little emotional, and I had planned to get through this quite easily, so I'll maintain my composure to the best of my ability. This is really a bittersweet moment for me in that my career spans almost 34 years, and I have such great memories, and the fact that I've been able to be a part of something great, and that is helping others in need, has been an extremely fulfilling career. And with that, it's, you know, the rewards that you take from this career are so great, but there are sacrifices to go with that. That said, I'm really proud to be able to say that I'm retiring from this community, which I've really grown to love. From the moment I arrived here as the Fire Chief, the residents, the business owners, the Chamber of Commerce, the El Segundo School District, everybody I ran into was positive, they were supportive, they spoke so highly of this community. There was a culture of absolute camaraderie and friendship and kinship that permeated this small community, and I quickly realized how special El Segundo was. From the moment I stepped around here, I've had nothing but incredible support from those community members, residents, and the businesses, and I wanted to say thank you to all those wonderful people. To this city council, the trust and confidence that you've provided me over the last five and a half years will never be forgotten. We went through some difficult moments. Through COVID-19, through other struggles that have ensued, you've stood steadfast behind me in my efforts to bring professionalism and progressive change to the organization, and I sincerely thank you for your support. To our city manager, Scott Mittnick, and our city attorney, Mark Hensley, a huge thank you for the support and guidance over the years. Gentlemen, you are the hardest working professionals I've ever had the pleasure to work beside. Your professionalism, your integrity, and desire to serve the community is remarkable. You two are the best at your trade, and the city is truly lucky to have you both here. And with that, Mr. City Attorney, I am not going to hold it against you that you're a Giants fan. To the executive team and our wonderful city clerk, thank you for the tremendous support and friendship. The group is a fantastic example of hardworking professionals that show up to work each and every day trying to make a better place for the residents, business owners, and employees of El Segundo, and in my opinion, don't get enough recognition for their efforts. So tonight, I say thank you to all of our executive team members for everything you do. And finally, to the El Segundo Fire Department personnel, I've lived by a simple model in the fire service that is community first. This means that we are able to sacrifice our own self-interests over the interest of the community that we serve. And to the members that have understood this model and have lived it in their day-to-day efforts, I say thank you, continued success, and please stay well. Finally, speaking of sacrifices, it's time to recognize and thank the most important people in my life, my wife, Jamie, son Connor, and daughter Ava. It's hard to describe what my family has sacrificed for me to be a Fire Chief for over 15 years, yet they did not complain about the long hours of work, the missed holidays and birthdays, and other family events, and were always there for me after long stressful days. So as I transitioned to retirement, I do so with a focus of love and commitment to my family, and look forward to many days of health and well-being with them. I thank you for this night, I thank you for the support, and I will truly miss El Segundo. Thank you.
Chief, don't go anywhere, I'll see the photo.
Don't walk away yet. Can we say, can we share a few words about the chief? All right. I was thinking about this evening and honoring you, and I was thinking about, it was a pancake breakfast, that it was my first pancake breakfast as an elected official, and we were there, and Ava, I met you for the first time there. And Ava slipped some information to me that morning, and that morning, it was Chris's birthday. Chief Donovan's birthday, he didn't want anybody to know, and she told me, oh, it's his birthday, he doesn't want anybody to know. So I walked around and made sure that everyone knew it was his birthday. And then we sang "Happy Birthday" to him, do you remember? And I remember when it was over, he shook my hand, smiled, and threw his teeth, said, "She's going to get it." And I just, I remember seeing you blush just a little bit that day, and for a guy who stands in front of that mic with all the charisma and confidence, to watch you blush in front of your daughter, in front of your department and the community, singing "Happy Birthday", it's a wonderful memory that I will keep, and I hope it puts a smile on your face when you think about it.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for everything you've done, but more, most importantly, thank you for keeping us safe and informed during COVID. I think, you know, we had, we have so much faith in you, and when you shared information, there was a lot of trust, and you never broke that trust, and you just provided great information. And I know that, you know, your ability to, you know, calmly portray information and get it out there, I know that I had many, many people across the whole city of Los Angeles come to me and say, hey, we rely upon your fire chief's information to keep us up to date. And I just want to thank you very much for that. And I do also want to say thank you, you know, from the community perspective, you know, you were so great, and you had fun with us as a community, you know, especially with our Battle of the Badges, you really went in and you modeled for us at ladies' night out. So thank you for being a part of our team and part of our family, and we are definitely going to miss you.
Thank you.
Chief, you know, I've said this before, that, you know, being a leader, especially being a leader in this situation is never an easy task, but I will tell you that you made it look very easy. Even though we gave you tasks that did not make it very easy at times, I really appreciate the fact that you have taken the last five years to move us towards a more of a performance and metrics-based and merit-based organization, something that's very, very important to us. But the thing that really stood out to me during my time with you is how involved you got with the community and how much fun you had with it. I know Councilmember Persnick just mentioned from the, I think one of the times I recall is that Yelp Elite thing that we did, where we took a tour around the city and all those restaurants, and you were like the Pied Piper for the group. It was, it's those things, though, that made you so approachable. And I know that in the community, they appreciated it, they looked up to you, and they were very proud to have you as the chief, as was I. So again, I really appreciate everything you've done, don't be a stranger in town, and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
Chief, I'll echo a bit on the praise of your leadership. You know, firefighting is probably second only to fire starting, and probably predates that as a career field for humankind, and the ability to stay dynamic with it and make sure the things we are doing aren't the things we were necessarily doing a few years ago, but doing it better. I watched it save my neighbor's house because our doors opened more quickly, I watched it save my other neighbor's life because our doors opened more quickly, and those firemen were there that quickly. And those are all innovations that came through in your time. But not just with the leadership of our department, but your regional leadership, I think as we touched on here, that paid dividends for us when it came to the pandemic. There's a lot of people who are running to the hills who have senior living facilities, and we were not. And that's because the soft skills of your leadership allowed us to do things there, provide nursing care, rally the troops with the local service groups, and let the people there know we had a plan for their well-being. And I would take that as, if there's an achievement that this council can lay at the feet of their fire department, our ability to weather that storm and not have a single issue with it is a testament to the leadership you have and the trust that your peers put in you and your department puts in you, and it's certainly that we put in you. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Chief, Chris, I said a few things earlier about your illustrious career, but a couple other things. One, I really enjoyed getting to know you at a personal level and sharing some lifestyle best practices, so to speak. So it's been really fun. And I want to say thank you, Jamie, thank you, Ava, and thank you, Connor. I know it's going to be great to have your dad back and not working as much or not working at all, whatever he chooses to do, but I could tell when those words were spoken that that hit home for you, and we're very thankful for everything you've done to allow Chris to make a huge contribution to our city. So thank you. All right, Chief, we've got a plaque for you.
Oh, perhaps the young lady, let's stand next to her dad. There we go. No, everything's all good, all good. What about Chief Lee? We've got to get Chief Lee in here, too. Very good. Here we go, a couple of shots, there we go, and, okay. I hate when that happens. One, two, and, a couple more, and, one more, one more. After 30 years, come on. All right, beautiful, thank you. 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 And I think accepting the Family Court Awareness Month is Sandy Ross, Representative for California Protective Parents Association.
Hi, my name is Sandy Ross. And first, I would like to say thank you to the mayor and to city council. 16 years ago, I ended up in the family court system dealing with issues related to child safety. And I had no idea what the next decade would look like. I guess I had many faulty assumptions about the prioritization of child safety. But most would be surprised to know that in California, there are family court judges on the bench with no, zero training on childhood trauma or domestic violence. Domestic violence is about power and control. The desire to maintain that power doesn't disappear at the end of the relationship. When children are involved, the family court system becomes the next platform. Our goal, as mentioned, is just to shine a light on empirical data and on the need for the courts to become educated in these areas to better protect children in these cases. I want to say thank you. I'm very, very grateful. I'm grateful to live in a community like El Segundo, and I wish our Chief Donovan leaving the best, and welcome our new chief. And most of all, I thank you for standing with us to proclaim November as Family Court Awareness Month and to honor the many children out there that need to be taken care of in the court system. We're up to 160 cities and counties. El Segundo was number eight when I reached out. We even have a couple of states now. So I want to thank you for that with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. We appreciate you being on. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Okay, next up, we have the Los Angeles Hyperion Sewage Treatment Wastewater Spill and Recovery Update. And I believe we've got our Director of Public Works, Elias Hasun, on Zoom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Here is the Hyperion update. First, let me talk about the reimbursements. As of today, the total amount of reimbursement has been $2,970,000. The total of payments that were requested is $2,770,000. And out of these payments we have processed, or rather, Hyperion has processed, 1,884, which is 68% of the total requests. And that means the remaining payments to be processed is 886, which is 32%. Regarding the odor, I received some odor complaints over the weekend. And that was due to the repair work being done to the damaged flights and chains for sludge collection of the two primary tanks. The work on one of these tanks was completed by Hyperion on Saturday. And the work on the other is ongoing and is scheduled to be completed by tomorrow. With respect to the proposed air monitoring program, Hyperion is working with a vendor for the implementation of this program. The system will detect hydrogen sulfide, wind speed, wind direction, temperature, relative humidity, parametric pressure, and real-time. This information will be provided via a public website. The vendor has provided this information on two temporary stations to Hyperion, which will be on trailers, on wheels. These trailers can be installed within 21 days of issuance of a purchase order. The issue at this time is power, how to provide power to these stations for air conditioning and so forth. One potential solution that has been identified by Hyperion is renting generators. This approach works, although it might potentially create noise issue for the adjacent residents. And also emissions might be another potential concern. The vendor is still working with Hyperion for the permanent monitoring system. Please note that the functionality of the permanent stations will be the same as temporary stations. My understanding is that the Hyperion is working on the roadway. So that's why we have a temporary versus permanent. After the work is done on the road, these become permanent stations. And the other understanding I have is there will be three permanent stations as opposed to temporary units. In other words, the two temporary units will be converted into two permanent stations, and one more will be added. Mr. Tim Defeta with Hyperion is here, and I'm sure he'll be more than happy to answer any further question that the city council may have.
Elias, Councilmember Nicol.
Yes, sir.
Earlier this week, some information, or maybe it came out late last week over the weekend. But it was, there's something not functioning properly at the Hyperion. And it came up, and there was, there were findings for it. And so I'm just trying to understand, one, what is that that's not working properly? Two, at what stage of the process is that? And three, how long has it not been working properly?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that one of the scrubber had some issue. And that led to the number of complaints to increase. And I learned about that later on. And I believe that they were able to resolve the issue. I had a discussion, a positive discussion with Hyperion. And I did ask them that if there are ongoing issues with Hyperion, and, you know, a plant of such magnificent and really as big as Hyperion is, you would expect issues to rise every now and then. I asked them to let us know, and that allows us to put that information on our website. And I requested them to do the same. So the community also would know that that has, that issue has been raised. And they have started releasing information to me. So I've received a few emails. And ever since I got those emails and the issues that they have had, whether it's with the scrubber or whether for the primary tanks, I reflected that information on our website with the scheduled completion work that Hyperion has going. My understanding is that the work, that the problem with the scrubber is already been taken care of. And the two primary tanks, one of the tanks, as I said, the work was completed on Saturday. And the other one, they are scheduled to finish the work by tomorrow. And I don't know, Tim, is there anything I missed that you want to add?
No, you covered it, Elias.
Wasn't there a citation issued?
My understanding is that there was a notice of violation that was issued because of the scrubber not working properly. And there was also a notice of violation that was issued on Sunday by AQMD to Hyperion.
Okay, I'm not sure. I guess the reason for my questions is to understand again, like I've asked before, is it didn't smell before the spill, like it smells now? And so what has changed? And so, you know, a citation was issued for something not functioning properly. And what I'm trying to understand, Mr. Defeta, is what, like, what is going on, or what are we not being told? We're just your neighbor. We're just trying to find out what's going on and where the end, is the end in sight, or is it not in sight?
So Councilmember, for the primary tanks, those are the tanks that process our sludge. We have about 27 of those. So two of them, the chains broke in there, so we had to go in to pump those down. And so in the process of opening the tanks to pump them down, clean it, so that mechanics can go in and fix the equipment. And so that's what occurred. So in those instances, you're gonna have elevated levels of H2S. And then the AQMD rules, if they can verify six complaints, we get a notice of violation. And so that was what occurred. So once those tanks are cleaned, and the cleaning will finish, is expected to be finished tomorrow, then the mechanics can go in and work. And so the orders that are coming from those tanks will be eliminated once the cleaning is done. So right now, the work that, once they work during the day shift, at the end of the shift at four, five o'clock, then they return the covers back. So that's the email that was sent to Elias as a practice. Once they open the tank, they work on it, and then they'll put the covers back at the end of every shift until the tank is fully cleaned out.
Got it. I have another question for him, but it's not in the subject matter. So if you guys want to have any follow-up questions.
Yeah, I just have one. And I don't know, maybe if Portland's on, maybe you can help answer this one. But you did say that we have 32% of claims still have not been processed.
Yes, sir.
That's a big number. It just is a big number. It seems that we're just crawling towards the finish line on these reimbursements. And I could kind of understand if all of that 32% or close to it came in on the final day of the deadline, but I don't believe that's the case. So where are we at? I mean, I think there's still some residents who have not seen a reimbursement in four, five, six weeks.
Yes, sir. So the information that I received was that was a turnover on side of L S C D regarding processing these invoices. They had the turnover, so they brought the new individuals, and they brought more analysts to make up for the positions that became vacant. Aside from that, my understanding is that for the remaining, they have had issues with getting the copies of the receipts and the information that they needed. But nevertheless, they have promised us that they are putting, and they have been actively adding more personnel. So this program could be processed, and these payments could be processed as expeditiously as possible.
You said they had turnover. Are you trying to say that people who are processing the claims quit?
That is my understanding.
Or did they just reassign them? Anyway, okay, I appreciate it. But I just think that there is something that has to be pushed a little harder here. Whoever is gonna take the lead on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Nicol, you have another comment?
Yes, this Thursday evening is the Citizen Hyperion Forum. And Mr. Defeta, I just want to make sure, last time, the link that was sent out was changed at the last minute so that it would be a webinar link versus an open link. And I do not want two links floating around out there in the universe for people to be upset and/or not let in. Because there was 44 resident participants at the last one month ago. And many online spoke about their displeasure at not being able to be involved or included because they had the wrong link. So I know we had that problem last time, that it was not a webinar link that was sent out originally. So I just want to make sure you check with staff, and we get that sorted out as well. Elias, you were not allowed to, you were not capable of logging in last time and/or speaking. So we had no member of staff other than myself to, able to speak to the residents and have them hear us. So I just want to make sure that we sort out those technical difficulties so this Thursday can be worth the time and effort.
Yeah, I will follow up with staff and make sure that issues are addressed.
Thank you.
The Councilmember Nicol, you took the thunder out of my next topic about this forum. But thank you for bringing this up. I'm pleased to inform you that I've been in touch with the Health Department of the county and that they have taken us up on attending that forum. So they will send a rep from Ms. Han. So there will be a representative from her office.
Thank you.
Elias, just one quick question on, and this is somewhat city-specific, but was this an agendized topic at the Regional Water District meeting last Thursday?
Yes, there was. And I attended that meeting. And I was able to brief the board regarding the outstanding issues and the fact that we are working with Hyperion and AQMD for installation of a monitoring system on the fence line of Hyperion. In fact, you're absolutely correct. Also, there has been some meetings. As you know, I am serving in the ad hoc committee. So there were meetings that were held. And there is one coming up this Friday as well, and I continue to serve at that capacity.
Thank you.
Elias, this is Councilmember Persick. When have we received an update on what caused the situation? And when is their first active, like, table crop exercise? Where they're actually gonna bring in all of the resources from around the county to do a disaster test exercise?
Yeah, they have, they have been a number of meetings. In those meetings, different people at different capacities, from professor at university all the way to general managers of other sanitation districts. Over 30 people have been involved and have spoken. And they are looking at basically all the possibilities. One thing that was determined, and please, Tim, weigh in if you would like to. It was determined that really, in that particular day where we had this unfortunate incident, that the amount of debris was not really any different than normal. And I'm gonna be careful about how I'm gonna put that. They were able to send cameras into the lines that feed the Hyperion plant. And they didn't see any failure of any of the pipes or any of the conduits. So they really could not find any reason why there would be any additional or any failure or anything that happened that particular day. So they're concentrating on the way that this plant is operating. I share my personal view at this. And I believe that eventually, within a few weeks, the report is gonna come out. But they are proceeding with the discussions at this time. And I believe the committee is getting ready to issue the report. Tim, do you want to add anything to that?
No, so I cannot speak on behalf of the committee. You are a committee member. All I can say is the assessment is ongoing. And various, all aspects have been looked at in terms of trying to determine the cause of the spill. And then to your specific question, we are looking at sometime in November doing a tabletop exercise and an actual exercise of an equipment as part of that process of testing out the systems and protocols.
Okay. Thank you all for being on. So are we, as a follow-up, though, are we gonna get a presentation at city council once the findings are complete, in terms of what caused the?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will work to make that happen. We will make sure that there'll be somebody here to explain that and answer questions.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, we're on to public communication. Those wishing to speak via Zoom, please click the hand icon, and the host will announce your name when it's your turn to speak. If you're dialing from a phone, please press star nine to raise the icon hand and star six to unmute. No video will appear. You will only hear the commentary. That's if you're on phone. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak? Three people. Okay, we'll be bringing them in. Masks back on, please.
Hi. Christie Wallace. 66-year resident, third generation. Some people believe you can't fight change. But I'm an example that it can happen. And it started with my grandfather in this chamber in 1930. He had the 30s and 40s, and my father in the 50s and 60s. And last time I was here was in 1972. To speak before the camp- to speak before the council to put the teen center in on Grand Avenue. So I think close to 50 years, I think it's time I come back. I have something to say. It's specifically having to do with S B nine and S B 10. Since that's happened, some things have been going on in town that now will affect a lot of people. Specifically, we're talking about the Mariposa Project, which I understand really could not go forward in many ways until certain maybe zoning is changed. And since the rules of the state changed, I know that you have to, maybe I'm speaking out of line, but the council or city has to come out with some kind of way to handle all these things. So S B 10, particularly that project was going to have the suggestion, and I was at that presentation looking for a lot of council members. And I did see, I think, the planning commission person there. 15 units on a very busy street. I know the whole town is very busy. I've seen the changes. I know we're all busy. That spot is not the only busy spot. But even if you do the, the, what are they called? The, the studies. And you know, there's lots of traffic, this and that. The change of the look of our small community, going from the homes that we do have into these larger condo complexes. I understand they're important. Change is important. It's supply and demand. We don't have enough homes. People want to buy. But I know that one thing, this is not for low income. Having been told by the two developers, I won't mention their names, but they did say a million point five. So I'm looking at this. I had some notes I just found about, about this yesterday. Now I've already thrown away my notes and I'm going to start fresh. Because the number one thing I learned in education as a teacher, that data drives. And so data will come from if this is done or the future, we hope, is that we have more tax revenue. And I'm going, so is that the purpose of changing our zoning? Is it for the tax revenue? Because right now, if you change those, the zoning, I'm at 516 and my neighbors on both sides, they wouldn't have purchased and bought these properties about 10 years ago and put in so much money, they're worth millions of dollars now, to have the small community feel. And now the property across from me, there's two double lots. That would be under S B nine for four pieces of property and another four pieces. You put S B 10 up there at the other end, that goes through too. And now I have, I understand it was possibly reduced from 15 units to 10, but now they don't have to have a parking lot. Our city is just having a heck of a time with parking. And why is that? I already took a little study on my own street. No one out of 20 homes uses their garage for parking. So if we went around and told everybody, you got to park your stuff in the, in the garage, we might not have this problem, but you can't do that. That's the freedom that we have. So we have a density issue up there. I understand we have it everywhere. But I really would like the city to take a real close look at what we're doing when we keep changing the zones or whatever. You know, I don't know, is it tail wagging the dog? You know, I'll build this. Every property is going to be $2 million. Look at the money coming in. But it's all going to be on my comfort zone and on my back. I'm paying taxes too. But now it's going to change. Everything's going to change in the area if this happens. Okay, so Christie, where are we going to get this money for our, to help our city? We need the financial support and we also need more houses. Where are we going to go? I, I don't have an answer.
Ms. Wallace, just normally we wait, but since you're here on the dais now, I can speak freely because all five of us endorsed a letter to the governor imploring him to veto S B nine and 10. And we all advocated very strongly regionally, along with many local elected officials, to get those killed in legislature. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. We share your concerns. We share your concerns about the parking impacts. We, the tax revenue doesn't really benefit us anyway because you might know we get a little over 6% of the L A County tax allocation based on Prop 13 in the late 70s. So it doesn't really benefit us much, much anyway. And we're absolutely concerned about what's going to happen to our single family neighborhoods, which is why we have on the agenda this evening to start looking, what if any standards we can put in place for S B nine and 10. But even there, our hands are pretty much tied by Sacramento.
Who's making that presentation? Is it Mr. Hensley?
I think it's, yeah, Michael Allen, Planning Community, Community Service Director. And Mayor Pro Tem Pivotal.
Just for a point of specificity, on a one and a half million dollar home sale, the city share of that property tax is just under $800. So it's a, it's a negligible return to the city for residential development.
A million five is only 800?
That's the share that comes to the city of El Segundo. The rest is absorbed by the county and state.
Okay. I don't know how the math equation goes. I just paid my taxes for 516 Oregon Street and it was a substantial amount.
It's exorbitant, yeah. That just the city share is just very, very tiny. It goes back to a whole series of things from Prop 13 to the floor.
I could see why we might want to put that in there. Let, let a 15 or 10 unit complex go in there and it may be only $800, but it's times 15 is 800. That's great. But all these people who bought in this town to have this community feel, we're losing it.
We, we share your concern.
Feel like we don't have a say in it at all.
We did, we tried and it's done at this point. So now we're trying to do everything we can to prevent our single family neighborhoods. But anyway, we echo your sentiment and thank you for being here.
We're grateful you're here. The fact that I showed up at five and I know you were here. I didn't even know you were here earlier. And so not enough people say thank you to you for doing this.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Appreciate it.
And Ms. Wallace, we'll, we'll have staff follow up with you. So if there are future items on S B nine or 10, we'll, we'll keep you posted.
Last thing, I heard something. I was really unhappy. Part of my notes, I thought, that's emotional, that's not data. So this all goes through. I have no say in it. The 10 units are built up there. The two pieces of property across from me, now there's eight homes there. Let's all get parking permits. And I'm told, well, you have to buy each one of those permits to go on your car.
All that, all that stuff will be considered, Ms. Wallace. And just point of clarification, S B 10 allows the cities to allow 10 units on a lot, but they don't have to. The council would still have to approve it. So that is still a local control issue. But thank you. Yeah, but Mr. Mitnick is going to follow up with you on specifics. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll have staff follow up with you. We'll reach out to you. Thank you.
Okay, we're just waiting on the next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is John Pickaver. I'm a resident and member of the Sweat Equity Alliance. I want you to know that I, like so many in town, am high, am highly supportive of the important work the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee is doing. The reason for my comment this evening is in regards to the behavior and ongoing anti D E I sentiment from committee member Stephen Wood. Mr. Wood recently was the subject of complaint from a community member who wrote to the committee to express how appalled they were during a recent D E I meeting regarding Mr. Wood's comments about transgendered athletes. At the meeting, Mr. Wood, a longtime coach in El Segundo, interrupted D E I consultant Jimmy Pete when Mr. Pete said that the topic of transgendered individuals in sports is complex. Mr. Wood raised his voice to say, it's not difficult or complicated, Jimmy. It's men's bodies versus women's bodies. Not only would the implementation of Mr. Wood's position to ban trans athletes in California school districts from competing on the team consistent with their gender identity be in violation of state law, is also wholly out of step with the mission of the very committee Mr. Wood is a member of, as selected by you, council. Mr. Wood has since stood by these comments and has refused to apologize. He laughed at a fellow committee member when they told him of the pain he has caused the committee over this incident. Another committee member worried that Mr. Wood's insistence on including all sides of certain issues would lead to a thin veil for creating a platform for bigotry. Even the D E I consultant himself said he's very concerned that nothing lands with Mr. Wood regarding a number of topics the committee discusses. Having attended nearly all D E I meetings myself, I completely agree. What is particularly unsettling about Mr. Wood's position on the committee is his ongoing insistence that systemic racism does not exist. To be clear, I'm all for constructive debate and competing ideas. But to deny the existence and effects of systemic racism is an affront to a committee that bears the name Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Tell me, who on the Environmental Committee denies the existence of climate change? Is there someone on the Arts Committee saying we should focus only on STEM? And is there actually someone on the Investment Committee who says we should put all city money in Mr. Mitnick's mattress, growing at a rate of 0.0% a year? No. I'm certain the answer is no on that because it would be absolutely ridiculous. So why was it so important to this council to include anti D E I beliefs on its very own D E I committee? You shouldn't be surprised by this. I mean, I'm assuming you read Mr. Wood's application, right? I'm sure you saw the part where he said he wanted to be a quote, earpiece for the city and council. And what about the part where he referred to his fellow residents who peacefully demonstrated in the wake of George Floyd's murder as quote, out of control agitators? What about that said diversity, equity and inclusion to you? Counsel, you are the gatekeepers of the committees. They have no legislative power, no ability to implement new policy. All official city proposals and recommendations from the committees are either approved or rejected by you. So why did this council install a committee member who so brazenly disrupts and impedes upon D E I progress? If you were worried about what the out of control agitators might do on a D E I committee, why not just rec, why not just reject their recommendations? Why install an earpiece to do it for you? Please make this right. The last thing I want to say is this. Earlier at the meeting today during the special presentation on Hyperion, I really admired the tenacity of this council as you questioned the representative from Hyperion over the historic sewage spill and the repulsive odor that we know still lingers in the air and all the harms it has caused residents in certain parts of town. You spoke of your frustration that they were ending the relief programs early, the slowness it's taken them to reimburse people, and you forcefully demanded accountability. Not once did I see any member of this council echo perspectives from other community members who have said things like, I don't smell anything, or the smell's not that bad, or believe me, it was a lot worse years ago. And my favorite, if you don't like it, leave. This whole comparison makes me wonder if racism, if transpovia, if anti D I sentiment came with the same terrible smell, how much more motivated, more tenacious would we be trying to make our city a more welcoming place?
Thank you, Mr. Pickaver. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't talk loud. My name's Michael Verter. I am the estimator for Seadrill Construction. And I'm, I'd like to talk about item seven, finding us not responsive. I want to explain about the situation. We're supposed to be registered with the D I R, which we are. But it renews in July. I personally went and renewed it, put the credit card in and thought it was renewed until we bid your project. At that point, I received a call from the city saying we weren't registered. I checked and it said pending. And then we checked again. The city got a hold of D I R. We got a hold of the representative from D I R. And they have a, in their statute, they have a, I don't know if it's because it's COVID or something, they have a statute that if you inadvertently did not pay your dues, that they would retroactively, if you did it within 90 days, they would retroactively take care of it. So now, at this point, when you look at the D I R, we never had a lapse. We were also quite a bit cheaper, less expensive for the same project. We've done projects with the city, like it was $83,000. And somehow I'd like you guys to relook at if it was legal or not. I talked to the D I R today and they said, you know, it's up to the city. And $83,000 is 83,000. Or if, if they find out that it was, the project could be rebid again and you would still save that money. The prices could obviously be less. We apologize for the mistake. It was personally my fault, so I'm very upset about it. Basically, that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Is D I R Department of Industrial?
Yes, that's, that's the group that they monitor all public works contracts. The only thing in any of this stuff I saw for anything that you would have a liability for was if you did not report when you awarded the project to the D I R within 30 days, there's a $10,000 fine.
Okay. I'm going to turn over to the city manager to address this and the city attorney, maybe.
I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
This is, this is actually on the agenda. And so when, when this comes up, we'll, we should address it at that time. It's on consent calendar if you want to pull it and have a discussion about it at that time.
Okay, but this is new information. Is that right?
No, actually, and, and when it comes up, Elias Sassoon can address it that it was not at the time that they went through and determined who was responsible, that it wasn't properly registered at that time. And so we, we can discuss that at the time the agenda comes up.
We have been registered for four years. And it was a, a technical clerical mistake.
Got it.
And we thought we were registered.
Okay.
And I don't know, it's just, I would like to make sure everybody knew it.
Okay, noted, we're going to discuss it later. Thank you. Appreciate the public comment.
Will I hear back or?
You can wait. You want to wait, wait outside there and then?
Yeah, it's coming up shortly. It's on consent.
Yeah, there's a screen right out there and then we will address your concerns.
That is your last speaker for in chamber. I believe Mona has some Zoom speakers.
Yes, I have three, there are three speakers on Zoom. The first is Heidi Anderson Swan.
Hello, I am Heidi Anderson Swan. I am a Harosa Beach resident and I educate about the mental health risks of marijuana use. I'd like to give a shout out to Councilmember Juroe, who I met at a road meeting last August. I sent you all an email this morning with links to articles about my comments. One of the articles I sent was from People Magazine. It was published last Friday. It featured my friend Laura Stack. Laura is a professional speaker and her confidence is unshakable. Her son Johnny got his mom's good looks and intelligence. He had a 4.0, but he did not get her confidence. So when he was offered marijuana at the age of 14, he took it and he loved it. He became addicted to it. Johnny had to go into treatment for it repeatedly. At the age of 19, he was suffering from acute psychosis, which was brought on by his chronic use of this ultra-high potency marijuana dab. And he took his own life. Do all the residents of El Segundo know what a dab is? If they don't know, they don't know what a pot shop will bring into their community. When we voted for legal. When we voted for legalization in California, I thought we were just legalizing the old-fashioned joints from Woodstock. I was wrong. Today, one of the most popular products sold legally in a pot shop is a dab. A dab is a highly-processed, highly-concentrated, addictive marijuana product. It's 10 to 20 times stronger than the marijuana in 1980. Why is it called a dab? Because just a little dab will do you. Using a dab is called dabbing. It's very popular with the kids. Like Johnny Stack, there may be many El Segundo youth who think dabbing is medicine. They think it's healthy. Why wouldn't they? They're told it's a wellness product. They're not told about the side effects. Among them are an increased risk to psychosis and suicide. The products Johnny became addicted to were purchased legally from a medical marijuana shop by a young adult who had a medical marijuana card. This young man purchased a bunch of marijuana because a doctor doesn't really give much information about dosing, so a kid can buy a lot. And this young man turned around and sold his extra products to younger customers, and a drug dealer was made. So when Johnny turned 18, he got his own medical marijuana card, and he had plenty of product, and he became a dealer to younger kids too. The CDC reports one in 16s who try it will become addicted. I hope you will invite me back to speak again. There is a lot more information El Segundo residents must understand before they can make an educated decision. Laura Stack wishes she knew this. With this knowledge, she could have saved her beautiful son's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swan.
Okay, Bart Bright.
Hi, yes, thank you for having me. My name's Bart Bright, and thank you, Heidi. I have, I had a son named Kevin Bright, and he started using cannabis when he was 15, and he thought the same thing. He thought it was harmless. And in fact, I thought it was harmless when I was doing it in the 1970s, in my 20s. And it was a lot weaker back then, and for the most part, I experimented with it, I enjoyed it, had fun. It wasn't always smart to be, of course, driving around high on marijuana, but the thing is, is that now, back then, it was probably averaged about 3% to 5% THC, which is the part of the, which is the drug that gets you high. And now, like Heidi said, there's dabs that, you know, go from, anywhere from, let's say, 50% to 99% THC. And so what happened is, my son, he ended up dying by suicide. That was on August 14th, 2018. He was 29 years old. The last articulate thing he said to me was cannabis has ruined my life. So I was shocked, of course, and devastated. My family was, my wife was. So after mourning for quite a while, I decided to find out everything I could about today's high THC cannabis. And I did a lot of research, and I realized that he wasn't suffering from schizophrenia. He was suffering, the times we saw him suffer, and in psychosis, from something called cannabis-induced psychosis, which is a diagnosis in the DSM-5. You can Google it. And so what happened was, I started learning more about it, and I found Marijuana Anonymous. There's over 350 meetings nationwide every week for Marijuana Anonymous. And so for people who say it's not addictive, and it's healthy, and it's good for you, I don't think there'd be 350 Marijuana Anonymous meetings every week if that's the case. In addition, he called it his medicine. And I have his cannabis card right with me to just remind me that actually what he called his medicine made him worse and worse, and ended up him taking his life. There are also 13,600 members of a Facebook group. It's a Facebook group, it's a private group, and it's called Cannabinoid Hyperemesis Syndrome Recovery. And this is something, it's called CHS, again, you can Google that, where the person just keeps vomiting over and over and over. And many of them end up in the emergency room. Some have died from it, not a lot, but some have died from dehydration. So it's called CHS, and the recovery group, Facebook, has 13,600 members. So again, if it was harmless and all good, all good stuff, you wouldn't have all those members. You can go onto Facebook and you can find that. I also started Zoom meetings a year ago, and it's a support group. It's called Marinon, and it's basically the marijuana version of Alanon, and it's the, basically, the other side of the coin for Marijuana Anonymous. We have four, over 400 members, and many, many loved ones, especially young people who are really suffering from cannabis use disorder. And to hear the hundreds of people that I've either heard in Zoom meetings every week, because we have either three or four meetings a week, or to read their emails is heartbreaking. And again, lots of cannabis-induced psychosis, 5150s, emergency rooms, it just goes on and on, and also attempted suicides. So I know the industry's making lots of money, the tobacco industry's into it now too, and I know it provides tax money, but to me, the tax money's not worth it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright.
Next is Sean O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Brien, and I'm a resident of El Segundo. As a member of the LGBT+ community, I'm a proud supporter of the DEI and applaud its important work for our city. The DEI's mission to make El Segundo a more welcoming place for all is crucial for our future. Because of this, I am concerned by the ongoing comments and actions of DEI member Stephen Wood. His behavior is unacceptable and does not represent the commitment made by the city and the DEI committee towards inclusivity and diversity. As a community, we need to make it clear what we stand for and that the behavior exemplified by Stephen Wood will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Next is Robin Moser.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, I'm going to piggyback on two of the other speakers that spoke tonight on marijuana. I live in the South Bay for the past 20 years. I'd like just to make two points in about two minutes. Number one, we do not want marijuana dispensaries near our vicinity. Number two, there's not nearly enough education happening on the danger of marijuana, similar to what Heidi mentioned, especially among the youth and elderly. So first, I want to voice my concern over the prospect of adding the medical marijuana shops near our homes, schools, shopping, parks. I lived near a, I don't want to call it undercover pot shop because we knew what it was, but it wasn't marked during COVID, and it was like there was an endless stream of addicts lined up before that store even opened. It's not the kind of thing we want to condone for the youth in our community, regardless of if the shop is legal or undercover, I guess we'll call it. I could see the evidence of the strong addictive properties since the patrons were lined up by 6:00 AM. It was a very happy day for our family when that location closed up for good. It made the neighborhood feel safer because you know those people are driving to the shop and home from the shop, going right by my house, which is a block and a half away. So secondly, I want to talk about the medical part of it. I am a physician assistant by trade, and I see a lot of patients freely using cannabis. Even today, the clinic, I had an elderly lady telling me that she really needed to start it for her pain because her family's pressuring her. But I mean, these folks are unaware of the danger of marijuana interacting, and I honestly don't have a half an hour to tell each patient, you know, it interacts with your sleeping medicine, your antibiotics, certain ones, blood pressure medicine, antidepressants, and blood thinners. And these elderly people, and obviously the youth, don't really know about the anxiety, fatigue, dizziness, changes in gait, especially among the elderly. I mean, it's evident that we haven't had any public awareness about the negative effects of this healthy plant. Do we really want to show this next generation that this is a benign substance? I have patients that are afraid of taking Tylenol, for real, and they're very happy to take this natural supplement. And I do not work in the ER. I probably have a lot of stories about the psychosis from cannabis, the heart issues, the respiratory, and the hyperemesis, like was mentioned earlier, and panic attacks. So I just want to thank you for seriously considering the danger to our community of just embracing these pot shops like they're a normal, healthy part of life in the South Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, or thank you, Ms. Moser.
There's no one else with their hand raised to speak.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from the city manager to follow up? Go ahead.
Mayor and council, just so there's clarity for those people that are listening to those speakers, the city currently prohibits and does not permit any marijuana uses in the city. There is a cannabis initiative petition that's being circulated in the city that is not, it's being done by a private party. So just in case people are listening and think the city is promoting some sort of retail outlets at the moment, that's not the case. So just want to make that clear.
Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, I'm totally confused. What, that was a strange, not strange, but what, is there a predating event that had speakers come here to talk weed?
I suspect that there's probably word out there that we have this cannabis initiative petition, and people are confused, which is why I decided to explain.
Fair enough. Yeah, and it's not just us. It's happening throughout the South Bay. It sounds like these people don't necessarily live in El Segundo either, but they got word, yeah. Okay. All right, procedural motion, read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. You stated your last name. Do you have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
Drew, so moved.
Thank you.
Nicole's second.
Great. Madam Clerk, would you please take a vote?
I think one of the consent items, the speaker earlier.
We're not, we're not on consent yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Presta?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes. Great. Okay, Mr. Mitnick, you're going to say regarding item seven on the consent calendar?
Yes, if city council would like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, continue.
We could have Public Works Director Elias Sassoon address that issue on.
Yeah, I would like to pull item seven, especially because the gentleman went out of his way to come down here. So we have item seven. Any other pulls? No. Okay, do we have a motion to approve items four, five, and six?
Drew, so moved.
Great. Do you have a second? Second. Are you sharing the love, or what? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please do a voice vote?
Chris, I'm sorry, Mayor Potam Pimentel, are you the second?
I am the second.
Thank you. Councilmember Drew?
He's not first.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Presta?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pimentel?
My father would say I was number four out of three. Yes.
And Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
All right. Five-oh with the exception of seven.
Okay, item seven. Construction contract with Stephen Derek Equipment Rentals and Professional Services Agreement with Wallace &amp; Associates Incorporated for Construction Management and Inspection Services for the Water Main Improvements on Grand Avenue Project. Mr. Mitnick, or I'll turn over, I guess, Mr. Sassoon?
Yeah, he can address that.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Every public works contractor has to be registered with the Department of Industrial Relation, or the acronym is DIR. So the Cedro Construction Incorporated registration was shown to be expired when we did check the registry. So the bid opening was in 8/24 of this year, and the expiration date was 6/30/21. And all the copies of the expiration and the correspondence is attached to the staff report. So basically, at the time of the bid opening, this contractor was not registered with DIR, and regrettably, based on rules and regulations, we do not recommend the award of this contract to this contractor, and I'll be glad to answer any more questions.
Just that, it seems to be a technicality that they went back, sounds like retroactively, and corrected that mistake or whatever with the DIR. Does that bear any weight, or is it because of the time the bids are in and we should leave it as, as staff recommends?
Is that question toward me, Mr. Mayor?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, yeah. In consulting with our attorneys, we believe that since the contractor was not registered at the time of the bidding process, the staff is to recommend the rejection of this bid.
Okay. Merk, you concur?
Now, Elias, does the, I was told that the, it was not, this person was not registered before, but we believe they are now, this explanation of that potentially this was DIR's failure to timely do this, and that they're retroactively reinstating these? I don't know. Is that true, or is there any way to determine that?
There could be a way to make that determination, although our looking into this, that was not the case, but I'd be more than happy to go back and double-check.
What we could do is hold this over for two weeks, determine the veracity of that story, and whether it was retroactively done, and then potentially that error could be, or that issue could be waived, but we would need to factually look into that.
I just need to penalize this firm if, in fact, it was another governmental agency error.
Right.
And without knowing that for sure, I think we owe it. I mean, is there any urgency in terms of timing and funding this?
We can wait two weeks, can't we, Elias, to bring this back?
Yes, sir. We most definitely can wait two weeks. Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Sassoon, question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would you have awarded Cedro Construction the contract if they had not come up as not registered?
I believe so. I believe the contractor has specified the references, and they have done work before. So we really frankly don't have anything against the contractor other than the fact that we are enforcing the laws on the book.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't carry it over for a contractor that was not going to be awarded the bid to begin with.
Yeah, that's a good question. Okay, so unless someone would like to make a motion to approve that, I'm not going to. Item seven? Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to continue it to the next?
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Scheduled meeting?
All right, I'll move to continue it.
I will second.
Okay.
Nicole's second. Sorry.
You had first and a second already.
No, I think we have to say our last name and second, right? Okay.
Mayor Boyle's first, Councilmember Nicole's.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Presta?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Okay, five-oh to continue.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a public hearing. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding the introduction of an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code Title 15, Zoning Code, Chapter 14, Historic Preservation, Chapter 15, Off-Street Parking and Loading Spaces, Chapter 22, Administrative Determinations, Administrative Use Permits and Adjustments, Chapter 23, Director Discretionary Decisions, Chapter 24, Variances and Conditional Use Permits, Chapter 25, Site Plan Review, Chapter 26, Coastal Zone Development Permits, Chapter 27, Amendments, and Chapter 29, I'm sorry, Chapter 28, Public Hearings, and Chapter 29, Appeals. And the city clerk just stepped out. Oh, there you are. Was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
I'm sure it was, thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No, it has not been received.
No, thank you. Okay. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Mitnick, who will present?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our Development Services Director, Michael Allen, and staff will present this. Just a reminder, this is a Just a reminder, this is, uh, some, this is, involves a series of cleanup items. This is in the strategic plan and it's been on your to-do list for quite some time. Having said that, I'll turn it over to Michael Allen. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mitnick. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, thank you, Mayor, for reading the exhaustive, uh, title. Uh, it'll save us from doing so. Uh, before you tonight is a text amendment, uh, which is part of, uh, a, a long, ongoing effort to improve the city's, uh, development services and, and development, uh, review process, uh, that the Planning Division oversees. The update will, will essentially consolidate the processes associated with our discretionary approvals, both those that are approved, uh, at an administrative level, uh, approved by the director, and discretionary approvals approved by the Planning Commission and/or city council. Um, I, I'm going to hand it over to our principal planner, Paul Samaras, who, who's going to walk you through the, the basics of, of tonight's text amendment. And then we also have exhibits with the specific text itself, just in case we needed to bring those up. And with that, I'll hand it over to Paul.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Boils and fellow council members. Uh, the item before you is a zoning code amendment to improve the discretionary permit review processes. Um, the current, uh, zoning code has been in place since, uh, I'm trying to advance my slides, forgive me. I got a little stuck here. Okay, great. Uh, the current zoning code has been in place since nineteen ninety-three. And over the years, uh, we have amended the code to address individual issues as they come up. In fact, in the last four to five years, we've actually had several code changes per year. Uh, and that is part of our efforts to be responsive and to make improvements to the code as they are needed. Uh, the most recent example was an amendment to address the issue of, uh, beekeeping. Um, but one area that hasn't been addressed much is the processing of discretionary permits. And for those who are unfamiliar with discretionary permits, I just wanted to provide a brief explanation. Um, basically, uh, the city zoning code contains regulations in two main areas, uh, permitted uses and development standards. Um, for example, in a commercial part of the city or a zone, um, the code may list several uses as permitted, such as retail sales or offices or, uh, restaurants. And also the code lists development standards, such as, uh, maximum building height or maximum building size. When someone wants to open a business that is listed as permitted or construct a building that meets all the standards, the city approves those requests by rights without any special process or lengthy review. However, in cases where a proposed building, um, exceeds height limits, uh, that type of request, um, goes through a special permit process where the city has to evaluate whether there's special circumstances that justify approving, uh, an exception to the code. Uh, or in the case of uses, um, restaurants are permitted by right, as I mentioned, but having, uh, a banquet hall, uh, requires special review. And during that special review, we just make sure that, uh, the operations of this particular type of business don't have any negative impact on the neighborhood. So these, uh, special requests and reviewing these special requests requires what's called a discretionary permit. Now, uh, there are different types of discretionary permits, and most have very different review processes. Some deal with the uses, others with development standards. Some are reviewed by the director and others by the Planning Commission. Some require a public hearing and others don't. While the proposed ordinance aims to simplify and standardize processing these permits. So, in the case of permits reviewed at the director level, uh, there are seven in the code that are listed on this slide before you. And each of them has a different review process. Um, so seven different review processes for seven different application types. While this draft ordinance proposes to consolidate all seven processes into one. The same applies to discretionary permits reviewed by the Planning Commission. Uh, there are multiple discretionary permit types with different review processes. And the proposed ordinance, um, seeks to standardize all these different processes. And that is a main substantive change in the draft ordinance before you. There are some other miscellaneous changes, such as updating, uh, position or department names, updating historic preservation, uh, chapters, so its processes are more consistent with the rest. And in addition, uh, reordering the chapters in the zoning code to make the code more intuitive, more user-friendly. So, in conclusion, um, the proposed ordinance consolidates and simplifies the planning process. It makes the permit process more transparent and accountable. It improves customer service. It facilitates development and engages residents more, more in the process. Uh, and for these reasons, we recommend that you introduce the proposed ordinance and schedule a second reading for adoption on November second. Um, I also wanted to, uh, reiterate that this is not a one-time effort. We continuously try to improve on the code and we intend to come back to the city council with additional code amendments next year to address several issues, and some of them are listed here on this slide. That concludes our presentation and we'll be happy to take your questions.
All right, thank you for that. Um, let's see. If there are no tech, um, without having comments about what was presented, are there any technical questions to go before Mr. Samaras before we open for public input? Okay. Public hearing is now open for public input. Madam Deputy City Clerk Schilling, is there anyone in attendance via Zoom wishing to speak?
There is one, uh, Tony, um, Reyna.
Great.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor Boils and members of the city council. My name is Tony Reyna and I'm representing Continental Development Corporation this evening. I'd like to start my comments by extending congratulations to Paul Samaras and the Planning Division and the Planning Commission in their endeavor to update and improve the development review process in El Segundo. It's obvious that this has been, uh, quite a large task. And the effort to simplify the processes and provide more predictability and improve the customer service is much appreciated. Um, in reviewing the proposals, um, it appears to Continental that, um, they, these updates substantially meet these goals. Uh, so my comments will be limited to, uh, the recommendations, um, by the Planning Commission for two items and the proposed own text amendment. From Continental's view, these two items are not entirely consistent with the goal. The first item is the proposed change to processing applications for off-site parking covenants in the non-residential zones. So currently, the director is authorized to approve at a ministerial level, off-site parking covenants for up to twenty spaces or twenty percent of the required number of spaces, whichever is more. The Planning Commission is recommending eliminating director, director ministerial approvals. The Planning Commission is recommending that off-site parking covenants previously subject to ministerial approval will be subject to the new director discretionary decision process. This requires Planning Commission review as a receipt and file item. The Planning Commission further is recommending that a Planning Commission decision approval practice be required for all parking covenants for more spaces than the director is authorized to approve. This discretionary process requires a Planning Commission public hearing. The proposed recommendation result in two separate approv, approval processes for the off-site parking covenants, which isn't consistent with the goal to consolidate and streamline the processes for, and for improving customer service. I would like to, this report that reviewing the off-site parking covenant involves a standard review and a discretion to apply the approval criteria. So if the application meets the requirement to demonstrate their satisfactory excessive parking, excess parking at the proposed off-site location, the proposed off-site parking location has either pedestrian access and it's within a reasonable proximity for walking distance to the use involved, or it doesn't. So currently, I don't believe, uh, and would like to request that the council consolidate and approve one discretionary approval process for the review of all of the off-site parking covenants at the director discretionary decision level. As is currently the case, these director decisions, uh, require Planning Commission review and the commission has the option to receive and file the decision via the consent agenda or discuss the items and reach another decision. The second item that I'd like to comment on is the recommendations to modify public noticing requirements. So that in addition to the current requirement to provide notice to owners within a hundred and fifty-foot or three-hundred-foot radius, applicants would be required to send a notice to occupants within the noticing radius. After I spoke with Paul about this item, I, I learned that the reason for the change, or one of the reasons for the change, is because over fifty percent of residents in El Segundo are renters and sending notices to these occupants would capture this demographic. So, so this demographic would receive notification of projects that may impact the neighborhood. This is entirely understandable. However, to require notices for occupants in the case of commercial projects does not, um, meet the city's goal to simplify processes. Rather, it appears to us to be unnecessary and hurting them. It is requested that commercial projects be exempted from the requirement to provide notices to occupants except where it is required by state law. I think for planning, um, coastal commission approvals, there may be a state law that requires, uh, noticing for both owners and occupants. The reason for our request are the occupants to not be identified from the assessment rolls. I've spoken with our public noticing vendor and they have informed me that other methods must be used to identify, uh, the occupants. This add time, adds time, labor, and cost to determine the identity of occupants to prepare, prepare the noticing materials. I would just mention that the estimated tenant population in the buildings at Continental Park is around four hundred tenants. Some of these are traditional tenancies. Some are co-working and, and, uh, shared office firms like cross-campus, and some are subsidies. There are many changes to tenancies that incur, occur in all of these, um, uh, examples. Another item, um, to mention is that the commercial tenants do not vote, so there shouldn't be a compromise of a voter right to know. I'd also like to mention that other local cities, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Hermosa, Florence.
Ms., Ms. Reyna, can you, can you wrap it up, please? I just realized we're, we're way over time.
I'm so sorry. Yes, I will. So I, I'm almost at the end. So we're, we understand that these jurisdictions, um, do not require, um, commission, I mean, do not require, um, noticing for occupants. So that basically wraps up my comments and I thank you very much for considering Continental's input regarding the proposed updates to the development review process.
Thank you, Ms. Reyna.
Happy to answer your question.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised for public communication.
Okay, great, thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madalena, so moved.
Thank you.
Jeru, second.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Prestak.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pimta.
Yes.
Mayor Boils.
Yes.
Five oh close.
Great. Okay, council discussion. Also, it was really hard to hear Ms. Reyna. I, I think I got the gist of her two points, but maybe staff, maybe Mr. Samaras or Mr. Allen can summarize the two concerns expressed by CDC? Sounds like you, if I understand correctly, your staff presented one thing and the Planning Commission said, actually, we, we'd like to not be so generous in the discretionary process. We'd like to be involved in at least one of those processes. Is that right? Maybe just restate which, what issues are.
Actually, the, the Planning Commission, um, did, uh, sort of agree with staff's recommendation on those, uh, two topics. Um, and, uh, if you, if you don't mind, I can kind of go over or summarize quickly what, uh,
Yes, please.
Ms. Reyna, um, mentioned. Yeah. So with regard to, uh, off-site parking covenants, um, today, um, as Ms. Reyna mentioned, uh, the code, uh, allows the director, without any, uh, sort of public process, to approve off-site parking for up to twenty spaces or twenty percent. And, uh, off-site parking for more than twenty spaces, uh, is, uh, at the purview of the Planning Commission, without requiring a public hearing, public notification. Uh, in the proposed ordinance, um, we've, um, made a change to require, uh, going through the, the, the new process, the updated process, where the director, uh, has to make a decision, but first do public notification for up to twenty parking spaces. And the Planning Commission, uh, for more than twenty spaces has to hold a public hearing. Uh, the purpose of that, uh, recommendation was to simply, um, maintain the same, uh, decision-making authority. So for twenty spaces, it is still the director. For more than twenty spaces, it is still the Planning Commission, although there's some public notification added to the process. Uh, Ms. Reyna is suggesting that, um, for, for off-site parking covenants, it may be better to just, uh, grant the, the discretion to the, the director to approve all off-site parking covenants. Because the thinking is the property owner is meeting their parking requirements. It just, ha, they happen to be meeting them on a nearby lot and not on their lot, but they're still meeting their parking requirements. So that's the thinking there. Um, so if you wanted to, if you think that, that it would make sense to, uh, let's say, lower the level of review so that, that all those requests are decided by the director, if you direct us to do that, to sort of make things more efficient, uh, faster to approve, sure, we can make that change in the ordinance before we come back to you. Uh, with regard to the second, uh, topic.
Paul, real quick.
That has to do with.
Paul, real quick, I just have two questions. Has it been an issue in the past where having the, um, the director able to make these decisions without going to the public? Has it been an issue in the past? And if we did add this component where they had to do notification to the public, how much extra time are we adding to the process?
Uh, in this particular case, uh, we have not had, um, any particular issues. Uh, it was just that the code was unclear about what process to follow. So this was a way to, uh, clarify what the code requires and also make it consistent with the rest of the processes uh, that the director is in charge of. So it was a, is a, it was a matter of sort of consolidating, uh, standardizing processes. But it did, but it did add a little bit more time to the process in this particular case. Um, so if, uh, I had to estimate the time, it would add, uh, maybe about a month's time So if I had to estimate the time, it would add maybe about a month's time to reviewing a public, an offsite parking covenant.
Okay, Ms. Samaras, what about the second one? You were, that was the one related to public notice and commercial? Can you clarify that one, too?
Yes. Yes. So one of the changes that we've incorporated in the ordinance was to add a notification requirement for occupants of properties, rather than just property owners. As Ms. Raina mentioned, you know, our latest demographic numbers showed that in El Segundo, at least 56% of residents are renters. So whenever we have, you know, important decisions made by the director or the planning commission, the renters who may be affected by those decisions are not notified. So we thought that it would be fair to include more residents and be more open and accountable to the public. Now specifically with regard to notifying occupants, Ms. Raina is suggesting that if you apply the same requirement to commercial properties, rather than just residential properties, it adds an extra level of difficulty and cost for developers, applicants, to, to notify all the additional commercial tenants. And so she's saying that this is kind of a, a burden on, you know, sort of the private sector, commercial property owners. And from her perspective, it's unnecessary, as she mentioned, commercial tenants are not voters in this city, so, you know, they're not being unfairly excluded if we don't notify them. From staff's perspective, we actually initially considered primarily the residents, so that was kind of our primary focus, but for, in the interest of being more transparent, you know, as a government, to the public, we thought that it made sense to include commercial occupants as well. Several cities in the South Bay area near us do not require commercial occupants to be notified, that's true. Although there are other cities, you know, the city of Los Angeles, Burbank, and others, that do require commercial tenants to be notified. So it's kind of a balancing between how transparent do we want to be, how open do we want to be to the public, versus perhaps imposing a burden, an additional burden on commercial property owners. I hope that explains it well.
Yeah, well stated, thanks. Mayor Potemba-
Is, is there possibly a different standard of what counts as notification to a commercial versus a residential neighbor? I mean, if it seems like the onerous part of the process is your inability to find off an assessment role who a commercial neighbor is, is a door hanging good enough? You know, a note on the door as opposed to a personalized or registered letter?
Mayor, if I, if I may-
You'd like me to address that, sir?
Development Service Director Michael, and just to, to speak to that point, typically what the radius mapping companies do is they will address to the tenant spaces and simply state that it's to the occupant. And so there's no, there's no need to obtain their most recent tax roll and to verify tenancy or anything of that nature, they, they obtain the most recent record, and then they address it to occupants in, in those cases. It's different than the property owner tax assessment role that is addressed specifically to the property owner.
Well, I, I appreciate Ms. Raina's input. I mean, we've got a very responsible developer who's been building here for, I don't know how many decades, four, and arguably has the most experience of anyone in town dealing with our planning department. And I think anything we can do to improve and streamline our process to provide better transparency, so people actually have a roadmap to what to expect through the development process, particularly for those that don't do it day in and day out, is good. And I absolutely concur with her based on what I heard about streamlining the process and, and taking her recommendations. So my, I would like to see us actually revise the ordinance slightly to incorporate her two comments before reading it, but that would require a vote, but that would be my thoughts.
I just have, I have a question for the Director of Building and Planning. What Ms., what the representative from CDC spoke about regarding offsite parking covenants and having it being like an administrative approval from your desk versus going to the planning commission? In many of those situations, I guess, I would love, I would like it to be described to the public. A parking covenant usually goes in line with other things that have to go to the planning commission, correct?
Uh, not, not all the time. There, there's scenarios where the use might be permitted by right, it's a permitted use in the code at that location, but they may not have enough parking. And so that might be the only X-factor that they're trying to solve with, with the covenant for offsite parking. So in many scenarios, it, it may not go to the planning commission for their consideration.
How many have you had since you came on?
None.
You haven't been here long.
Although there's one, there's one in consideration, but otherwise, none.
Uh, the only reason I bring this up is, in the past, there was a, a parking covenant agreement. It went with a development agreement for a certain museum in town. And it was allowed to be developed without any parking because it was a parking covenant with Chevron. That parking covenant went away. And then the planning commission was tasked with, and the planning department was tasked with essentially creating this whole new box that the museum in town fits into, right? That if you were a nonprofit museum of modern art located on Main Street, that you are not required to have parking. And so whenever I hear something about removing, going to a public hearing or going before the planning commission and parking in the same sentence, I feel like, no, do not remove that, that block, let it go to the planning commission, let them discuss it, because there are situations in town where businesses can come and the director may be like, oh yeah, that makes perfect sense. And if the director doesn't have the, say, historical knowledge or experience with that area, or how that may affect the residents in that area, because the practicality of it, you know, is those employees are not going to walk three blocks, they're going to park in the residential area where there's no permit parking required and go to that, that business. Things like that, I just think going before the commission is the way to go. That's just my two cents.
Scott, can I counter that? That same situation, I think the issue with that was that the covenant that they had with Chevron was not durable, for whatever reason. That would have happened with a planning commissioner or a staff. So I don't think the process would have changed. And if you think about all the development proj, I mean, I've just gone through recently, and I know you've gone through it at a residential level, it is so painful to get anything built in El Segundo, let alone the state of California, primarily because of CEQA, because of the public input process, because of the transparency. Everything is meant to protect the surrounding residents and businesses, and I just, a month of lost opportunity times every development project, and that's not the only delays that we have. I mean, it's just, I mean, I hear your point, but I think that would happen regardless of whether it had gone through the planning commission, would have gone through staff, the covenant wasn't durable.
Well, that example, yes, but I'll, I'll give another example. Let's say that there's a WeWork-type space that wants to go into a building and they say, and planning staff says, oh, well, you don't have the parking for that. And they're like, oh, we have a parking agreement, a parking covenant agreement with this, this parking lot three blocks away. Staff's like, oh, well, that makes sense, yeah, sounds great, okay, let's go. And it doesn't go to a public hearing. And you and I both know that those employees are not going to park in that parking structure. They're going to park in the residential streets, they're going to impact the residents, but there was no check, there was no balance, there was no public hearing.
But I, I guess my question is, are we talking about the exception of the rule? Because if, we can always pick out an exception to the process. And what I'm hearing, and, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, is that we don't trust our director to do the due diligence to make the decision. And I think that's the part I got a little bit of an issue with, because if we, we hired this individual, it's because we trust them to do that work, to get all the information, to make the right decision. And I think a month is a, a month savings on some of these projects is huge, because I don't think it's a month, I actually think it's longer than that. So I, I get it that there are exceptions to every rule, but I don't think we should be making a change based on the exception.
So I just have a question. When we're talking about the public communication, I mean, we're also talking about, so when it goes to the planning commission, are you asking for an additive where then you have to notify the public? Or can we just say it has to go to the planning commission?
I think the point is-
I'm not sure who the question was addressed to. Was that first half, uh?
I think the, if there's a public hearing, then it requires that a public notice go out, and so it, there, there's two different issues. One, as I understood, that Continental was developed, was addressing, one is the manner in which public notices are given, and then there's the issue about the parking covenant to whether those will go to the planning commission. If something goes to the planning commission for a public hearing-
It has to be noticed.
It has to be noticed. So, yes.
Yes.
Well, they're raising two different issues about what the notice has to be, but I don't think that, that they were tied together by Continental. I think what we're talking about is any type of public hearing notice going through a certain type of, you know, whether that includes just, you know, if that includes tenants or not, regardless of what it is. For parking covenants, I'm just specifically saying, because of the timeframe of publicly noticing and hold the hearing, it is about a 30-day process.
Let's not also forget that we made our development process more complex by Arts and Culture Committee. There is now a process by which you have to get approval for your art, the art, the way in which it's displayed. So we've already done things in the last few years to make this process more difficult for our developers, because the option is you pay a big fee, or you take on the art yourself. But if you take on the art yourself, you have to jump through quite a few hoops. So we've done that, and now we're talking about one opportunity to actually streamline the process, and we're not going to get that many other opportunities, because CEQA and the state of California, and the codes that come down every two years, already make it incredibly difficult to get anything built. So, anyway, but I think we, is there any more discussion before we, yeah?
Take this slightly different direction, but I think, Michael and Paul, what you're probably hearing is, there's some concerns about how we adjudicate parking covenants and how durable they need to be, and particularly how the business owners or prospective developer is going to sort of ensure that those things are implemented in a fashion that is commensurate with their plan. Because clearly there's some significant hurt feelings about some of the ways these are used, and certainly people who live on, say, for instance, Kansas Street, are really not happy with the way that some of these things have, have, have been enshrined and then implemented. So I think that's slightly different, because that's down the road of how we actually do the task of, of adjudicating a covenant. I tend to agree that anything we can do to speed up a process, if it's a good plan, it's up to us on our, I suppose that's probably a code compliance piece, to ensure that people are doing it the way they say they will, and on vetting their plan to ensure it's durable. But if we can speed the process up by a month, I'm okay with that. Something that I, because I don't have a land use background, I'm still a bit confused on, is how onerous is this notification process? It, it, it's, if it's enough that they're willing to call and testify that this feels onerous? Because on, on my reading of this, it did not appear onerous to include renters, commercial and residential, as well as business owners. But is, is it, I mean, in, in your time in Culver City or any of these other surrounding cities, is, is this that onerous a requirement?
Uh, in my experience, it, it's not. It does, it does add time and it does add a cost. It'll, it'll double the cost generally, or, or if not more, because there's usually more occupants per parcel than there are property owners per parcel. And so-
Well, but in, in this regard, he said-
More notices going out to occupants than it has additional time.
To make sure I have a sense of the scale, sorry, Mr. Collins' question, sorry, I know there's a bit of a delay, but to have a sense of the scale of cost, there's about 400 occupants and, and we're talking mailing a letter. When it comes to door hangers and direct mailing, this is something that the five of us actually know about. Uh, so you're, you're talking in, in, in the magnitude of hundreds of dollars, right, for, for the mailing? Or are we talking a magnitude of thousands?
I, I would put it in the low, low thousand or couple thousand range.
Yeah, so, so not trivial, but... I, even though that sort of rounds out my, my question, from the call, it seemed like we were putting an inordinate burden, it's still a significant burden. I think, though, we would take that in trade of, of 30 days of expedited approval of a parking plan. I do have a, one other question outside of those two, because we're consolidating and streamlining one of these things, there clearly was a reason that city councils were involved in approving liquor licenses. And that's one thing that is brought under director's discretion as opposed to coming to the council, and part of that is because of the implications that go on all things that come with, with bars. As we, you know, look, we did the smoking thing, because the smoking thing was clearly tied to residential concerns about how bars affect behaviors tangential to them. So is there, I, I don't know how many city councils have ultimate approval of bars in, of the 88 cities in LA County, I suspect quite a few, but I, I could be totally wrong on that. But I just thought that was something that, I realize that streamlines and eases things, and if you want to open a bar, then having to wait two extra months or four extra weeks for it to come to the city council might be a bit of a drag. But there is an extra burden that comes with those on the community in terms of their impacts, so I would be, I wouldn't have included it personally, but that's just my, my, my only three clarifications on this. I guess the, the notifications, which I'm satisfied with, the parking, which I'm satisfied with, the bar piece, I have sort of an open question about the wisdom of that, and that's probably more of a, a policy question for the five of us. All right. I would like to adjust the ordinance language just to incorporate the two comments, just to restate what I said earlier. Is there any other support for that?
I guess, sorry, I don't mean to poo-poo this or drag this out. I think from Continental's standpoint, and where they do the lion's share of their business in like the M1 zone, it makes perfect sense. Streamline it, there's parking structures, the buildings are there, that's where people are going to park, there's no residential anywhere nearby. Now, this one, it's, it's just, I do not believe it's a one-size-fits-all, because you're going to essentially, and this has nothing to do with trusting staff or not trusting staff, it's more, once an approval is given, it's really hard to go backwards. And so if you have projects in a Smoky Hollow zone or adjacent to residential, and now you're asking staff to make a judgment call, or to understand what either, what, how the five of us may be affected by that decision, because they did not see the unforeseen consequences in their choice, because it made perfect sense. And so that's where, yes, it's an extra step. Yes, it would be really nice to eliminate it and streamline it, but this is not, this step has been in there for years, years. And we've updated zone tax amendments over and over and over again over the last decade, and they've never asked for this to be changed. You know, so this is nothing new. This is something that they're used to, it's part of their process, and I believe that there are times up here on this dais where decisions are made, where there are unforeseen future consequences of our decisions. And I do not believe eliminating that, that public hearing per se, or going through the commission to discuss something and how it may affect, I do not think this is a one-size-fits-all and just remove it and, and leave it on staff. I think it puts a hot potato or a landmine potentially on staff's desk, where they feel like they're doing the right thing, but they do not know if it's the right thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could debate this all day long. I, I think you're making the assumption that a panel of five is more informed of the paid professionals that do this day in and day out. So I, I'll beg to differ on that one, too, that if there's not support, we'll just go forward and read the ordinance and just stating strongly how I feel. So are we good? We're going to leave it as is?
Well, can we not do something similar to what Mr. Nick, what Mr. Nicole said about having one set for if it's just a, if it's commercial zoned versus if there's adjacent residential or Smoky Hollow? Can we not have a separate?
Are you talking about the parking? I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that logic either, because there, if, if a director or a planning commission is going to make that decision, I don't think it matters if it's residential or commercial. You could take a project right now that's being proposed in development, that is trying to park their space with no residential around, they might want access to commercial that was absolutely going to affect potentially other commercial enterprises in that vicinity. So I don't think it's a commercial versus residential thing at all.
So question then, Michael, in the new, with the way the new ordinance is written, if we did eliminate the requirement to go to, do a public hearing, could it be written that it's at your discretion to, if you feel that this is a, it's a project that could cause challenges, that you could, could kick it and require it to go to a public hearing?
Yes, that, Councilmember, that, that's currently written into the existing code that I may refer any of these decisions administratively to the planning commission for their consideration. So that, that is currently how it's written as well.
Okay.
But we can beef that up if we wanted to add any thresholds or, or certain, you know, decision points that, that the council felt were important to, to kick up to the planning commission.
Is it also written in there where the applicant can have the option to have it heard before the commission, if they get a denial from staff?
Well, they can always appeal the director's decision to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, it's, we can go forward to the ordinance. I, I think regardless of what we choose tonight, and I've mentioned this to you, Mr. Bitnick, I would love Mr. Allen to dig into this department with a third party. I want to start measuring how long it takes to get projects built, where the pain points are through the process, and make this easier, because well before Mr. Allen came on board, you and I met with a couple developers, and we know there's opportunity to improve this process. We know it. And so to me, this is just one opportunity to make it marginally better and speed up the process, which with, it's, it's a painful process, and it's nothing on you, Mr. Samaras, or Mr. Allen, or the entire department. As I mentioned, many of these are state codes, mandates, some of it's CEQA-related as well, but it is a painful process. And anything that we can do to make it less painful and provide better transparency, better roadmaps, so our developers or builders or residents know what to expect of the process, they're better off, we're going to be. Because oftentimes, you get thrown curveballs that you didn't know to expect along the road. So I'm done venting, and whatever the council, the will of the councils at this point, we just read the ordinance as, as is.
Well, so just for clarification, the way the ordinance is written as is, is actually becoming more restrictive, like we're adding a step.
For the parking.
For the parking.
For the parking, it would have to go to the planning- For the parking, it would have to go to the planning commission, it would no longer be ministerial approval.
Right, so I'm actually in alignment with Mayor Boiles, so I would second that motion to remove the component that adds additional restrictions.
I think, Paul, Mr. Allen, what we're saying is, your recommendation to the planning commission, which they supported, was that anything 20 spaces or greater goes to the planning commission. Is that correct? What we heard from Ms. Raina is that that's too burdensome of a process. Let the director have the ability to make that decision. If the director chooses not to make that decision because there's ambiguity or they're uncomfortable, they can kick it up to the planning commission. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is that I think Ms. Raina is right, particularly when it relates to the first, her first point, which is that the director should have the ability to approve off-site parking with covenants that are durable, and if uncomfortable doing so, kick those up to the planning commission.
And I'm going to second that.
Okay. Do we have a third?
Random, just so that I understand fully, because again, this is not my front door business. If someone is in violation of their development agreement or their development plan, if they have a plan for an off-site parking covenant for 40 spots and it's four blocks away, and no one that they, none of their employees are using it, what's the recourse from the city?
Mr. Hensley, that's for you.
If we give, if we give a business an off-site parking covenant, but it's not actually being utilized the way it was intended to, unless it's done as part of a conditional use permit, it would be very difficult to enforce and take back that use, if you will. So as Councilmember Nichols said, once you give a land use entitlement, it's very difficult to take it back. Under a conditional use permit, if you can show under that that there's a burden on the community, you can revoke those, it's not easy to do either, but, which I think is the point, is if you do this with good intentions and hope that it works, but it doesn't actually work, you may not have any real ability to fix the problem.
But could we not put some, a component in there where there's like a fine?
Well, they're not necessarily doing anything wrong. They've entered into the agreement, but maybe the, either the patrons or their tenants or the employees just aren't using the parking the way they intended. They go to some other lot, they go to the streets, whatever. It's not necessarily the person doing anything intentionally wrong, it's just people have their own habits, they tend to sometimes do things differently than what planners and developers may think. I'm not saying that's, you know, a problem here, I'm just saying that can happen, and if it does, you may not really have any recourse.
And in that case, why approve off-site parking covenants, period?
Well, I think the intent is to try to accommodate, they're supposed to be used pretty judiciously, it's not supposed to be a common practice. Planners can speak this better than lawyers, but, I mean, just having watched this for a long time, you generally want things parked onsite, not offsite. But about 20 years ago, we started allowing these in some situations, but they're not supposed to be just granted a lot, it's supposed to be used judiciously and where it makes sense. And that's where there's discretion in the process.
Yeah, if I may, if I may add to Mark's comments, you know, I think that a piece of the puzzle also has to do with the amount of checks and balances that staff imposes upon these covenants. And if it is a discretionary decision that we're making on a staff level, things that we consider like proximity or distance, you know, we need to look at those things carefully. You know, in a scenario where a parking lot is four blocks away, I think that the assumption that it's less likely to be used is probably a safe assumption. And then so from a staff level, we impose conditions of approval that facilitate a better assurance that it's going to be used by, like mandatory valet services or things of that nature, where we can't guarantee it, but we can impose these conditions that will make that more likely a successful scenario. And I don't think there is a scenario where a parking lot four blocks away works very well without something mandatory like valet service during operational hours. And so that burden is on staff to be able to implement those conditions of approval so that we're not caught, you know, a year or two down the road where the lot's not being used and you're seeing parking intrusion on the neighboring residential streets.
Mr. Allen, while I have you there on screen, so was your recommendation to the commission that the commission approved, which was that threshold of the 20 spaces?
Well, I wasn't here when we went to the planning commission, but you're correct. It was our recommendation that the threshold with 20 spaces would get kicked up to planning commission, that's correct.
So now that you are the director, is that the type of recommendation you would have agreed with, disagreed with? I mean, I don't want to put you on the hot seat here, but if you are now our, you know, expert in the field, where do you sit on it?
I'm accustomed to these decisions being made 100% administratively without a threshold difference between what goes to commission and what's done administratively. I've seen these be approved at administrative level regardless of the number of parking stalls.
So that leans more towards your position, Mr. Mayor? With, obviously with the caveat there that's written into the ordinance that if there's something that you're unsure of, it can be sent to the planning commission for a public hearing? Well, if that's his recommendation, and that's where he stands, I just want to, I've been on the record and I'll continue to be on the record that there are unintended consequences, and there's good actors and there's bad actors. And Continental Development Corporation is one of the best actors in town. And so it's really hard to not 110% support something that they're recommending. It's just hard when, as Mr. Hensley stated, once an entitlement is given, it's very, very hard to go backwards. And so having, you know, that first line, you can say it's the first line of defense, but it's the first option to hear an item at the commission level where it's like, whoa, hey, what are the unintended consequences here? Let's discuss this. And yes, it does add time, and yes, there is an opportunity cost to that and a true hard money cost to that, to the developers. But at the end of the day, what are we truly trying to do? We are trying to be stewards of this town and ultimately be representatives of our residents in this town.
Mr. Allen, a quick question for you. This is just kind of bringing something up right now. So you didn't actually agree with the recommendation that was being made, right?
I didn't really do much of an analysis of what the planning commission reviewed, and so I can't say whether I agree or disagree. I just, I'm accustomed to larger-scale off-site parking arrangements be approved at a discretionary level. And I've also seen the difference between those that are done in commercial or industrial zones versus within a certain proximity to residential. And so I think that there's room for discussion if.
Don't get me wrong, I appreciate your honesty.
I'm comfortable with either.
I appreciate your honesty, but I'm just wondering, is there, how much else is in there that you have not had a chance to look at again? But we'll just deal with these two issue, or this issue right now. But I honestly believe it should be up to the director's discretion on whether he wants to make the call or whether he wants to kick it up.
Okay, I think we have Councilmember Pursta, Councilmember Giroux, yeah, Councilmember Nichol.
We haven't discussed the liquor license item that Mayor Protem Pimentel brought up, if we want to discuss that. I agree with him 110%. I think that that is something that should come before these boards, for the same reason that I've stated before, there are unintended consequences, and once you've done something, you can undo it.
I'm going to concur.
But you already got three votes, so I don't need to, I don't need to do a pine on that one.
This is unprecedented, I actually got one in here.
So, I mean, so just.
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify something about the ordinance regarding the alcohol licenses that Mayor Protem brought up. It is true that there is a change there, but it's not eliminating a public hearing review for bars. It is simply reducing the level of authority from the city council to the planning commission. So for a bar, you would still have a public hearing, but before the planning commission.
I think it's important to have it in front of an elected body, I do.
Because if a bar goes in where it's not, where it shouldn't go in, who's going to pay? Yeah.
Okay, then the only other matter was Ms. Raina's point about public notice. I don't know if there's enough momentum or energy behind that one to continue discussion or.
I think, I think she made a great point because it's, you know, if you're within 500 feet of PCT Tower, are you going to notify every, you're going to have to do the work to find out who that tenant is? I mean, to Mr. Allen's point, it gets sent to the occupant. Correct, Mr. Allen?
That's correct.
And I think to the occupant is adequate.
Well, is that what she was saying, or was she saying only send it to the owner of the building? In this case, PCT, whoever owns PCT? I think her point was.
Yeah, I believe, I believe she was, she was asking that it just goes to the owner.
And then the owner disseminate the information throughout the property, if they choose to.
You know, I think that, I prefer the ordinance the way it's written. I mean, that is a great example of where it may become onerous if there's a building tower. But I think this is clearly designed to reflect some of the smaller tenants that would definitely, could definitely be impacted by development in a way that one of our office towers wouldn't be. So I totally get it, I get very sympathetic to the argument, but I would take it as written as long as they can, as long as what counts as notification is, you know, a pro forma dear occupant.
Okay, so we have consensus on, before you read the ordinance, city attorney, I think, we have consensus on allowing the director to make the call on the parking, without, off-site parking provisions, covenants, without having to go to planning commission, and on the requiring the bars or any alcohol permits to go before city council.
Yeah, we would not delegate that authority to the planning commission.
So those are two changes.
What we'll need to do is really, we don't have the language ready to go, so we'll need to bring this back for first reading at the next meeting with those changes. Unless, I mean, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, we have language ready to go to make these changes, we should bring this back, right?
I don't have a precise language, but if general direction from the council is not adequate, we can go back and draft some language and bring it back to the council.
When we introduce the ordinance, we're supposed to have the exact language. We'll bring that back for introduction at the next meeting with those two changes. So this will be continued just for introduction to that till the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Paul and Michael. So we don't need, we don't need to do anything further than that. Staff presentations, we have number nine, Urusari Swim Stadium, The Plunge, update. And this is a receive and file. Mr. Bitnick, who's presenting on this?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this will be by Melissa McCollum, our Community Services Director, and Elias Sassoon, our Public Works Director. And I think I was going to start, though, do we have a PowerPoint?
You know what, we're going to do a bathroom break, so we'll come back at 8:35, that gives us nine minutes.
Thank you.
I was waiting for that question.[1421.35]
Item D, staff presentations, Erosari Swim Stadium, The Plunge update. Mr. Minnick.
Are we ready? Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will tee, um, up the item. Let's see what's on the screen first. This is item number nine, The Plunge update. Okay, uh, city council, we were last in front of you on this on June first. At, at which time the city council did make a decision to go with the, um, the full enhanced project. With an estimated price tag in the eight point three million range, a little bit more if you factor in potential, um, increases in, in the construction cost over time and with the contingency. So that was on June first. You directed us to work with the architect that was hired to do the initial design. And that had a lot of involvement to get to that point, no need to rehash that. So since that time, staff has been working with the architect, uh, to do this. And, and going through that process, uh, process, um, there were some challenges in terms of getting a complete package. And we'll, we'll go into that in a little bit. So we are now here, is this the right one? Um, we're gonna talk about the design review, the engineering design services and so on, budget and the recommendation. Could I have the next slide?
Um, do, do you want to go to the timeline or?
Well, actually, council, at this point, I'll just turn over to Melissa McCollum. She'll explain a little bit more on the background. And then Elias, and then if you have questions, and then we'll go forward from there. But this is, uh, an, an update to the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott, and good evening, uh, mayor, city council, and, and viewers at home. Uh, as Scott said, Public Works Director Elias Sassoon, and I really appreciate the opportunity to provide an update to, to all of you about The Plunge. Uh, tonight, we are going to briefly cover, um, the approved conceptual design. We're gonna update you regarding the engineering and design services and the project timeline. We're going to talk about some current operations considerations and provide a staff recommendation to not open The Plunge until the renovation is complete and to use related direct cost savings to help fund the upgrades. So city council considered Methune's needs assessment and conceptual design for the pool in June of this year. The proposed design honors The Plunge's status as a cherished landmark within the city of El Segundo, both for its historical architectural style and for serving residents as the primary recreation aquatic center since nineteen forty. With the recent addition of the El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatic Center to serve advanced competitive swimming and water polo programming, The Plunge is now being envisioned and positioned as a neighborhood community pool, offering a range of programming for beginners and intermediates. I'm going to share a few images now as a reminder of the design and the enhancements and the vision. And I encourage community members to return to the recording of the June first city council meeting for the full presentation. We do not intend to discuss the needs assessment and conceptual design in detail tonight. So, uh, again, as, as Scott said at the June meeting, city council directed staff to negotiate a consulting contract for engineering and design, design services for The Plunge renovation. And Elias is going to give an update on that effort at this time.
Uh, thank you, Melissa. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, following the adoption of the conceptual, uh, d- design and the schematic design by Methune, uh, by the city council, uh, at the direction of the city council, uh, we follow through and we, uh, requested and obtained a fee, a fee proposal from Methune. And we reviewed it and, and we provided our comments back. And, uh, as it was indicated earlier, uh, we, uh, were not able to, uh, get the full package. And, uh, and as part of our discussion with the consulting firm, uh, it was, it was made very clear to them that we needed for them, uh, to supply us and provide us, uh, uh, the other documents, and they decided not to do that. And, uh, consequently, we are not, uh, we are not having, um, a full package. And at this time, uh, staff is recommending, uh, that we, uh, send out an RFP and solicit proposals from the engineering and/or architectural community, uh, to be able to provide us with a final, uh, design and drawings that we need, uh, including contract documents, uh, for, uh, for advertisement of this project. And I'll be more than, uh, more than happy to answer any question that, uh, that you may have.
So I will go ahead and, uh, continue with the presentation and then perhaps questions af- after that, if that's all right, mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. So as Elias has outlined, there is a plan in place to move forward with the next phase of the renovation project. But we also want to give you and the community an update about facility, financial and staffing considerations related to a decision to operate or not operate The Plunge while the design work and the construction is completed. As a reminder, the facility has been in use for eight decades. The city has been discussing fixing and funding it for at least thirty years. It's served thousands and thousands of people, and many community members have a strong emotional bond to it. Without renovation, however, it is on its last legs. The Plunge, uh, was closed for ninety-nine days in twenty nineteen, which was the last full year of operations due to mechanical issues, which, uh, equates to being out of service. The facility was out of service for twenty-five percent of the time. The heater has been off throughout the pandemic, but there have been major filter leaks during this time. If The Plunge reopens without renovation, complaints about maintenance, airflow, temperatures of the air and water, and more will resume. In addition, the recently completed needs assessment for the facility identified dozens of code compliance issues such as ADA accessibility for locker rooms, showers, seating areas, pool entry and bathrooms, substandard water filtration and circulation that have frequent leaks, inadequate chemical storage, and more. As you can see, this, uh, the key renovations needed include a complete replacement of the pool mechanical systems and plumbing, reconstruction of the curbs at both the junior and senior pools, renovation of the locker rooms, and addition of a wheelchair lift for upper level access, and reconfiguration of both the entry, uh, as well as the renovation of the existing lobby. We do have good news to share, as the financial situation at the El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatic Center has improved this year with revenue of over eight hundred and seventeen thousand through the end of September compared to three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and thirty for all of twenty twenty. We expect to earn over a million dollars in revenue with Aquatic Center this year. The Plunge costs one million dollars to operate annually, including approximately, I'm sorry, over one million, uh, to operate annually, including approximately four hundred and fifty-eight thousand in part-time staffing and over a hundred thousand per year in maintenance cost. We're gonna talk more about Aquatics' operating cost and cost recovery and related policy at the next city council meeting. But it is very evident that opening The Plunge prior to having the proper facility and staffing and programming and fees in place will make the city's aquatics financial situation much worse. The current condition of the pool and the need to close it again in two years for construction limit our ability to scale up to an operations model that would not be hemorrhaging money. Obtaining suitable aquatic staffing levels to operate The Plunge in addition to the Aquatic Center and Hilltop Pool is also a concern. Our total staffing needs for senior lifeguards, lifeguard instructors, and the front desk for El Segundo's three pools is sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eighteen hours annually. We currently have enough staff to cover about thirty thousand, so less than fifty percent. Our current staffing shortage at the Aquatic Center impacts service there already, uh, leading to canceled programs, including swim lessons, longer customer wait times, and less than optimal lifeguard coverage, in addition to considerable strain on the employees who are in place. Our most recent lifeguard recruitment led to fifteen part-time hires with thirteen being high school students with limited availability. Current recruitments underway are needed to help fill multiple vacancies at the Aquatic Center. Some of the challenges relate to our pay rate versus other L A pools, as well as heavy reliance on part-time versus full-time staff. But there's also a national shortage due to, due to the pandemic that has impacted municipal pools' ability to stay open regular hours across the country. We cannot operate pools without adequate lifeguard coverage. Safety needs to remain our most important consideration. So for all of these factors, city staff with the agreement of the Recreation and Parks Commission recommend keeping The Plunge closed until the renovation is complete. In addition, our recommendation is to consider using the money saved by not operating The Plunge during this time for helping to fund the renovation. So let's look at the cost of renovation in just a little more detail. The estimated project cost is eight and a half to ten million, including the escalation contingencies related to rising construction cost. Thanks to allocations from the city of El Segundo, the El Segundo Unified School District, and Chevron, two and a half million dollars has been identified for the project so far. A community fundraising plan in partnership with Chevron was disrupted by the pandemic. The collaborative effort may be restarted and grow to include others in the community once there's an agreement on the path forward. So the current funding gap for the project is six to seven and a half million dollars. And again, staff's recommendation is to consider allocating savings from not operating The Plunge to help fund the upgrades. City council could allocate five hundred thousand dollars of savings from not operating The Plunge this fiscal year to help fund the renovation at the upcoming mid-year budget review. If the same or similar decision was made for the second year of work and the first year of construction, an additional one and a half million would be available in funding. So that would equate to four million dollars instead of two and a half million available for the project. Leaving the need to raise an additional four and a half to six million for the project rather than six to seven and a half million. There are several options to acquire additional funding for the project, including revenue measures, applying and/or increasing fees, community fundraising, and other strategies. There will be additional community discussions to come related to funding. Tonight's update is primarily to outline the reasons that staff strongly recommends not opening The Plunge until the renovation is complete and for clarification of the plan to issue an RFP for engineering design services. As mentioned previously, the city of El Segundo has been trying to fix and fund The Plunge for at least thirty years. We believe that we're on a realistic and a measured path that will help move us closer towards reaching that goal. Uh, Scott, did, did you have anything else that you wanted, wanted to add to the update?
I think we're good.
Okay, then that does conclude our, our update, and Elias, Aquatics Supervisor Linnea Palmer, and I, uh, are all available to answer questions and receive your input. Go ahead and stop, stop sharing the screen.
So I just want to give an update. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that, um, the Parks and Recs Commission had, um, talked about this topic quite a few times, and there were some concerns about, um, going back out to RFP on the engineering component. And we had an internal discussion and we were, we were able to come to an agreement and alignment. Um, so I think the, 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 the subcommittee is on board with, um, moving forward and we, there is a commitment from the city to ensure that The Plunge is renovated and remodeled. And we will try to shave off as much time as we can, but we are moving forward. Um, and then the other component, as far as the other funding, I know we've talked about this and I brought it up a couple of times, I want to put it on record, is that, you know, this is a historic building and it's very art deco, so we can tap into the, um, Arts and Culture Fund to help us, um, on the design, the art deco renovation. So when, as we move forward with, um, allocating funds from that fund, I would really highly recommend that we start pushing money aside for this renovation so that when it comes time to do the renovation, we have the funds from the arts and culture to really, um, highlight the art, art deco component of this historical bu- building.
Thank you, Councilor Purst, Councilor Drew.
So, um, I got a couple of things. I, I, it looks like I know that, uh, the next time we talk about this will be more about the actual revenues and cost recovery analysis and all that other stuff, right? That's not today, so I don't want to get into that. But a couple of questions I do have is, and I've asked this before and I still haven't got an answer on it. Um, we keep saying that ESUSD has one million dollars that they're giving towards this project. But what has not been answered to me is what do they get for that one million dollars? Do we have an answer yet?
So we, we did look at, uh, the agreements today, and, uh, my understanding is, you know, that they do get three hours of use at the Aquatic Center currently during the school year. Um, additional use is not tied to that one million dollars.
Okay, so in other words, it's not gonna be like three hours a day at The Plunge if, once it reopens? Because obviously that would really have a problem with cost recovery as, as it is, and that would make it more difficult. So there's no, nothing attached to the one million that already hasn't been given. Does that make sense?
That's my understanding, right?
All right, good. So then the next thing I had is actually, um, Carol, you mentioned the subcommittee. Um, is there a subcommittee on this? Aquatics? Because I know that I was appointed to it, but I haven't had a meeting yet, so I'm trying to figure out what we're dealing with here.
There is a, an aquatic subcommittee, and, uh, Kelly, Commissioner Kelly Watson and Commissioner Lee Davis from the Rec and Parks Commission are members of that. And they, uh, were a part of the development, of the needs assessment and conceptual design, and, and Lance, I think we've, we've spoken, um, or council member. Drew, uh, and I, we were not aware that you were on that aquatic subcommittee, that you were appointed to that. Uh, but moving forward, you will be, be invited to all of those aquatic subcommittee meetings.
Okay, so my next question is the current subcommittee. Um, honestly, has anyone from this subcommittee been meeting with this third-party consultant? Offline? Because if that's happening, I'm, 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 I have a little concern on that, because I, I do believe that this needs to be directed by staff. And anyone that's on a commission, committee, and board, I've been on them before, we're there to advise. But to take meetings is, is a different situation. So is that the situation? Has anyone taken meetings with third-party or Methune in, in particular? Mr. Minnick?
I, I can answer that based on, um, information that was provided us by two, two of the commissioners. Yes, two, two, two of the Rec and Park Commissioners did indicate that they had talked to representatives of the architectural firm, and they, they, they did so in the meeting we had on, on Friday in staff's office. It was not a Brown Act meeting. We did have a meeting with, um, two commissioners and a council member, the community services director, public works director, and myself. And it was revealed that, that two of them did have those discussions.
And just for clarification, eh, as they portrayed, was it just for clarification? There was no negotiations? It was just for clarification?
Clarification on what?
Just understanding, um, some of the, s- discussion about, uh, moving forward. With the project.
I would just like to make a recommendation going forward, because this is obviously, I mean, if you look, it's gonna be till twenty twenty-five. It's a long process, okay? So that I, I do believe that maybe we need to tighten this up a little bit and have it be more directed between whoever this third party is going to be that, that wins the RFP and staff. Um, and just keep it a little tighter, because I, 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 I don't think that it's necessarily a good idea to be having commissions taking meetings with, no matter for whatever reason, outside the purview of, of staff and council on something especially of this- outside the purview of, of staff and council on something especially of this magnitude.
And that was reiterated, reiterated in the meeting and, um, agreed upon by all members.
Yeah, that, that, that is correct. And just to be clear to, to the city council, to commissioners who may be watching and the city staff, when this city council gives direction to staff, in this case on June first, we were directed to go negotiate a design contract and move this project forward. We were doing that. Um, maybe there was a misunderstanding along the way, but, but going forward, it needs to be clear. When you give us direction, you made the decision as a governing board and then our job is to implement your direction. When others get involved for whatever reason, even if it's the best of intentions, it creates challenges for everybody, uh, including the, um, consultant. I believe based on what we talked about on Friday and what I tried to share with council members, I believe the lessons are learned. We put it behind us and we go forward and we get this project done as directed. And, and, and as far as commissions, committees and boards and the, the count, we'll have an item to the council in either the next meeting or probably the, on November sixteenth, I think that's our latest target date. We will have that in front of the council and you can deal with that.
This is obviously a very emotional issue for people as far as whether it be that, obviously, the history of, of the facility itself or, um, just the, the earnest of, of people to build a, an aquatics lifestyle in the city. And I get that and I appreciate all that. However, on something like this, with this type of money that we're talking about, the emotion has to be taken out of it and the logic has to be instilled. So I'm a little concerned that if we have, um, a, a subcommittee or whatever it's going to be, looking at RFPs and whatever it might be, where there's an emotional attachment to it. It, it needs to be looked at professionally. So I just want to make that statement here and maybe let's reconsider how we're going about this process.
Well, to, to that end, uh, the design piece is done, right? So the rest of this is all, all technical, right? There's not, there's not a, a subcommittee role in this. Maybe we get down to talking about fees and lifeguards and with programming, but the, 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 what color the windows drapes going to be part is, is over. Now we're in the, the math and the spreadsheets and the protractors.
Well, to that point, uh, Ms. McCollum, can you bring up, you have a slide with the timeline?
I do.
I've, one was emailed to me and it looked more like a, like bar graph, like with blocks on it. I don't know if you have that one handy. I didn't see it in this presentation, but wh- what I didn't understand in looking at it is, I'm pretty sure we saw an amazing design. So when you look at this timeline, why does final design ready take from our issuance after we've interviewed people, which clearly interview them and them coming back on the RFP is going to be them showcasing something? We're going to be able to say to them, we have a design. What will it cost to build this? So I don't understand why from March of twenty twenty-two to the spring, summer of twenty-three, they're getting the design ready for public bid. I mean, why should the design take a year if we've already approved it? I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure there was a five oh vote that yay, we like the design. Wasn't it? Or Chris, did you say no?
No, you're preaching to the choir. This timeline is longer than World War Two.
So I, and maybe, and, and to that point, it could be a situation where we've only seen, you know, rough designs and these are not true full CAD drawings that can be passed off, but correct me if I'm wrong, the, the firm that we approved the design from, we've paid them money to create this design, so this design is now our property, correct?
Ab- absolutely. Um, it is just the conceptual design and not the full engineering design. So perhaps Elias can, can go into a little more detail about, about what will happen in, in the next phase.
Right. So what we have on hand is just merely a schematic and conceptual. Uh, the next phase of the project is to prepare the detailed plans and calculate, uh, you know, how much work is involved in every category. We gonna have designed by electrical engineers, by, by plumbing engineers, by mechanical, by acoustic, uh, by artists, by civil engineers for drainage, by architect, by, uh, uh, structural engineers for the slab, for, for the new pumps and filters. Uh, there is a, there's a lot of detailed design drawings that are remained to be done. So if you were to ask me, normally typically, the schematic and conceptual plans would be about fifteen percent, maybe, maybe at the most twenty percent. We got eighty percent of this project left to be done. So the, the reason the time is because there are different trades, uh, particularly with respect to this project, with dealing with an existing situation, which even makes these, these a little more challenging and, and complicated. Uh, so, uh, the, 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 again, to reiterate, what, what we have is, is just a very schematic and conceptual design that needs to be transferred into contract documents and specifications uh, and, and, and construction specs and special provisions so that, so that could be advertised and, and we can get the contractors to give us bids. Uh, and, and, and to that end, it's almost eighty percent of work is remained to be done.
Okay, I'm going to evolve my question slightly. If we would have been able to successfully negotiate a contract with the company that we approved prior to, would the only difference in the timeline be from now until February fifteenth or March twenty twenty-two? Would they still have had a full year of final design and ready for public bid in their timeline?
Yes, sir. Maybe even longer and I, and I can elaborate because Methune uh, provided us with another complete fee proposal. Uh, what they would not, uh, they would not be willing to provide us, and I confirmed that with them again recently. They would not, they would not want to, uh, be involved uh, in the, uh, environmental and the geotechnical aspect of it, which means that if we even had, uh, negotiated a price with Methune for, uh, for what the, what is on the table exclusive of environmental and geotechnical, we would still have to go and put an R, on RFP, another RFP for environmental and geotechnical, uh, which would further delay the project. Uh, the RFP is now done. We could put it out tomorrow for the detailed design drawings. But my point is, if we were to continue with Methune, we still would have to put out an RFP for environmental and geotechnical and we still would have to work with them for still, uh, some outstanding comments. Uh, uh, because right now, even, even their revised proposal is, is, uh, is still has a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of frankly, uh, comments that we are concerned about. So it, it would take another weeks, maybe a month of negotiations with the firm.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, because that was a very long answer to, I didn't think as long a question, but for the public that's watching, I don't, I want to make sure that they understand that the design that we have in our hands is not a final design ready for public bid. So that, that timeframe was always going to be in the process. We didn't just add a year and a half to this process. We unfortunately are adding six to eight months to the process, correct?
Well, even if we were to go with Methune, uh, the design would.
That, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. Yes. I just wanted to make sure so the public understands that, because at first, at first glance and, you know, yes, I'm an elected official and I sit up here, but I was looking at it like a member of the public thinking, wow, why is it going to take so long to do a design if we already have a design? You've now answered that question. I understand that. I just want to make sure the public understands that that timeframe was always in there regardless of where we were. Thank you.
Exactly. That is correct.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
It is impossible for me to believe that it takes a year to design a pool. It is im- I mean, if it's a hydrogen-powered pool that is going to Mars, maybe, but it's a pool. Like Admiralty brass or normal brass or tin foil on the ceiling, whichever, but a year for final design is like, I mean, this is not, I mean, am I missing something? The, the ATMP, that train is going to take less than four years.
Yeah, but in all fairness, they haven't even checked the soils. They haven't begun any geotechnical. They don't even know what they're working on. They have nothing to build off of. They gotta, they gotta price this out to, to contractors. There's no, there are no specs whatsoever.
Uh, a, a year?
I mean, I'm not surprised, actually.
If I can interject, Mr. Mayor, the members of the council, we, okay. I hear you loud and clear. We'll take a look at it and where we can move it faster, we will move it faster. If there are additional costs to move it faster, we'll let you know, but we're not going to give you any excuses. We get it. You want the project done, you want it funded and you want it done in a timely manner. So we got the marching orders. I will just add, not as an excuse, but I will add, it's not an ordinary pool. It's an indoor pool. It's a, a building built during World War Two.
Can we have it built in Texas and shipped here? Because I bet you they'd do it in less than a year.
You know what?
They don't require permits or plan checks either. I just said, but they do it in less than a year.
So council, it's a very good dialogue. We get it. Let us sharpen our pencil to see if we can go faster, period.
One other thing is that the, uh, the eight and a half to ten million dollar, um, uh, price tag, uh, that's in today's construction dollars. Am I correct on that?
Uh, the eight point three million is, well, if you factor in the escalator, um, due to time, as we, we provided a separate sheet that explains that, it could go higher if it takes longer, so.
Okay, so then it ain't going to be eight point three, because by the time it gets constructed into twenty twenty-five, it's going to be on twenty twenty-five construction rates.
We'll have Ukrainian steel by then. It'll be cheap.
Cool.
Yeah, and just also for clarification, I know this is a huge project for us. It's going to cost a lot of money and early reserve, real reserve, early results from the survey are really indicating that the pool, the plunge is very high priority for our pub, our residents. So I just want, you know, we will, uh, the, the staff will be presenting that presentation, that, uh, survey results to us in the near term, but early results are that the plunge is a very high priority for our residents.
Any further comments or questions? This was a receive and file.
We'll move forward and if, um, just for clarity for the council and people who are watching, we will, we'll go out to bid tomorrow morning.
Okay. Mr. Sassoon, what I'm hearing is anything we can do to expedite getting to those specs to build upon would be great.
Yes, uh, and most definitely as part of the negotiations, I, I promise you that I do my utmost to be able to get not only the best fee proposal, but have this done in the most expeditious manner.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's it for that one.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to Senate Bill Nine, Housing Development Approvals, Update and Next Steps, Recommendations. And Mr. Mitnick, is Mr. Allen going to present on this one?
Yes, my, Mr. Allen will present and just, uh, a couple of comments at the beginning. We're in a very, very, very tight timeframe to have this in place by January one due to the new state law. And the City of El Segundo, like all the other cities in the state of California, we're reacting to this law. We are not deriding this. So having said that, Mr. Allen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening again, members of the city council. Um, I, I won't spend too much time introducing the topic since it's been, uh, in the news quite a bit, but for the, you know, the viewers that, that may not be familiar, uh, Senate Bill Nine or SB nine for short, uh, was, was approved or, or signed on the governor's desk in September sixteenth, effective January first. Uh, imposes, uh, upon the city, uh, requires us to approve or, or allow the subdivision of R one or single-family residential lots into two lots and develop two units each lot. And so it effectuates going from one unit per parcel in a R one zone to upwards to, uh, four units or a net new of three new units on top of the one existing unit. Um, tonight, I'm, I'm here before council seeking direction to engage with a consultant under, within the city manager's spending authority, uh, which is less than fifty thousand dollars. And so I, I apologize if there's confusion. I, I know in the staff report I mentioned, or in the amount budgeted, I included one hundred and thirty-one thousand. That is the total line item budget for professional and contractual services. I'm seeking direction to engage with a consulting firm for less than fifty thousand dollars, which would, uh, eat away of that, at that one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, for, for this fiscal year. Um, although SB nine mandates, uh, us to allow the subdivision and development of two units per parcel, it does allow us to develop objective design standards. There are some parameters, uh, that, that we can take liberty and, and design or, or develop objective design and development standards for the development of the R one zone. Uh, and so what I'm asking is that we bring on a consultant to help us with that process, engage with the community. Uh, a portion of that would be some engagement that, that would provide educational opportunity to the residents as well as to elicit feedback as it relates to their priorities, uh, for the development and design of the R one neighborhood. If there is a, a, a value, uh, that can be preserved or a neighborhood characteristic that can be preserved by implementing new design standards, then, uh, that's what we're seeking to do under, under SB nine. Um, if you think about it from this way, there's the design standards and development standards of today were crafted with a fifty-foot wide and a one hundred foot la- deep parcel in mind. That, that could all change. And if somebody were to split that down the middle or split it horizontally, uh, you know, hamburger or hot dog style, uh, those development standards will not equally translate. Uh, and, and we may end up with a product that, that it does not represent the, the characteristics that we envisioned for the R one neighborhood moving forward. So our hands are tied a little bit with the implementation of SB nine, but I would like that, that ability to bring somebody on board in the next two and a half months, uh, spend the time to craft changes, uh, either go back to the community or sit with the planning commission and, and have a design threat with the planning commission and then bring those design standards to the city council for adoption through a zone text amendment. Um, thank, with that, I'll, I'll just answer any questions, uh, that, that the council might have, uh, given your familiarity with the topic, um, hoping, uh, there's not a lot of new information. I did want to provide a brief update on the initiative that, uh, Mayor Brand in Redondo Beach is pursuing. That process is, has been submitted to the Attorney, Attorney General, uh, in late August. There were a couple of amendments that they, uh, provided all the way up until the first of October, uh, but that went through a public comment period, which expired on the twenty-seventh of last month, so just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, now there will be a six-week window where the Attorney General can put out a title summary, uh, for, for the initiative and then the authors will have one hundred and eighty days to collect approximately one million signatures. And that initiative will, will unwind or undo the current language of SB nine. Uh, but that is geared up for the November twenty twenty-two ballot and so we're, we're looking at quite a fair amount of time, uh, between the implementation of, of that potentially being adopted. And so I, if, if there, if there were desire for us to get engaged in that process, I would encourage that we do both of these, uh, so that we can take advantage of whatever rights we have as a, as a local agency now and develop development standards or design standards, as well as pursue engagement with the, uh, initiative going forward, uh, spearheaded by, by Mayor Bill Brand. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Allen, I think Bill Brand's constitutional amendment would unwind anything that attacks local control with regards to housing zoning. So it'd be SB nine, SB ten and anything in the future. And then, Mr. Hensley, you had said that there's a period where we could actually advocate for this initiative as a city. Could, we have to be careful about that. Can you explain that process?
Up until the time that it actually qualifies for, um, the ballot, which, um, I expect, I mean, that's a pretty, there aren't a pretty aggressive schedule to get this on the November twenty twenty-two, um, ballot, because it's going to take a lot of signatures for a statewide ballot measure, but if it qualifies, it's going to be probably later this, mid to later this summer. Um, and so the city can spend resources on it during that time period.
I know in talking to Mayor Brand about, I don't know, maybe a month ago, he thought it would take about ten million dollars, about ten dollars a signature to, to qualify, so he's making a big push statewide to gather signatures. I think he was at the League of Cities, wasn't he, presenting on this matter?
Yes, he made a tremendous presentation, actually, there. So he was very good.
So is that something that would come before council for consideration, whether or not we wanted to support that in some way?
Uh, absolutely, and we can, uh, get this back to you as quickly as we can get all the documentation and information and come back to with what your options are as far as supporting it. Um, yeah, I would expect it's going to take a tremendous effort and a lot of money to get this to happen by November twenty twenty-two.
The only good news is that, I don't know, if LA County was indicative of the state at large, the vast majority of local elected officials, I'm talking like seventy percent, were opposed to SB nine. So the fact that it's still passed on the legislature and then legislature got signed is almost unbelievable. So I think that, I feel. So I think that, I feel pretty optimistic that they'll get the support for the initiative. Anything we can do to help would be great. I had a question for you, Mr. Allen, too, on parking. I know with nine and ten, we can't impose any parking standards. Could it be, could be, could it be a good time, however, to consider something like permit parking throughout the city or some other proactive parking strategy that would make it more difficult or less desirable to want to develop four units on one? You don't have to answer now, but I think if you're going to, if we agree to authorize a consultant to engage a study, from my standpoint, that ought to be part of the consideration.
Yeah, I, I think that is a, it's a decent consideration. I don't, I'm, I'm hesitant to tie it to this study only because that would, that would likely take longer than the couple of months that we have to January first. But I, I don't think that it's out of the question. It's certainly something that we should pursue in the long run of, of, of other mechanisms that we can utilize outside of the development of the R one zone or development of private property. What else can we do as a local agency to effectuate that kind of impact that you're talking about?
Thank you, sir. I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to follow up to a question that was asked earlier about, uh, impact fees and impacts. So we still have the right, the ability to have full impact fees for issues like the impact on parks and all of that. So for Councilmember Perstek, the, the answer to your question is yes.
And so like, because my, my challenge, my concern is, is that we have a current ratio, park to resident ratio. And I think we should really ident, uh, analyze that, determine what it is, and then establish that ratio so that any future development that goes beyond that ratio, there needs to be either a fee assessed or a requirement to add additional park space.
Yeah, so that, that's a, that's an excellent point. And as, as Mr. Lilio pointed out earlier this afternoon, that, that study that's currently underway, the development impact study, is looking at the park and loo fee. Um, and, and one of the components in calculating what that fee is, is identifying the shortfall in, in park space and the contribution that the development of any new unit has on, on driving additional demand for park space. And then we will either, A, there'll be a fee associated with that and they can pick and pay an in-loo fee to the city, or they could provide that park space on, on, and it's, it's more regularly, uh, happens with, with large scale residential developments. You don't see it with, with R one developments. But they will just pay the in-loo fee. The larger multifamily developments would, could possibly include park space on their, on their, in their development.
Okay. All right. So we need a motion directing staff to engage with the community to develop alternative approaches for design standards and guidelines for residential development within the single family zone per the fiscal impact that was already stated. Do we have a motion?
First, it's moved.
Thank you.
Jeru's second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstek?
Yes.
Mayor Potempe Matal?
Yes.
And Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. Item eleven, proposed amendment to city manager's employment agreement. Hey, Rebecca.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good evening, mayors, mayor and members of the city council. I'm Rebecca Reddick, your human resources director. Um, the item that we have tonight is the city manager's employment agreement, which provides for an annual performance evaluation and an adjustment to compensation. Per the agreement, the city council may authorize a salary adjustment for the city manager. On September twenty first, during closed session, the city manager had the performance evaluation. And on closed session on October fifth, the compensation was discussed. The item before you tonight is an adjustment, um, to the salary range um, for the city manager in the amount of six percent. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, very much. Mrs. Reddick, any questions, comments? No. Okay, so we need, there's two motions here, or two actions, I should say. The first one is to approve the proposed amendment number one to the employment agreement for city manager providing for a base salary increase of six percent. Someone like to move approval?
Jeru, so moved.
Thank you.
Nichols second.
Great. Madam Clerk, would you please take a vote?
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstek?
Yes.
Mayor Potempe Matal?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you. City attorney, would you please read the resolution, resolution by title only?
Mayor and council, a resolution of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, modifying the annual salary for the city manager job classification is ready for adoption.
All right, uh, do you have, anyone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Matal so moved.
Thank you.
Nichols second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a vote?
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstek?
Yes.
Mayor Potempe Matal?
Aye.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Five oh.
All right, thank you. That concludes our regular business. We have reports. City clerk, anything to report this evening?
Nothing this evening.
All right, thank you. The city treasurer is not on. Councilmember Jeru, nothing for me this evening. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nichols?
I just want to remind everybody, I mentioned it earlier, the Hyperion Citizen Forum Council, uh, is Thursday, the twenty first. Please go to the city's website to get the link to the meeting. Last meeting a month ago, we had forty-four members of the, of the public there, which was nice. Uh, it's better than the three we typically have. It's a wonderful opportunity to get a glimpse into what is going on at Hyperion, what construction projects are on the horizon, and, uh, just maybe a more intimate, detailed, uh, description as to what is going on there. And that's what I got for you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Perstek?
Yes, I have a couple of things. So, um, I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend is the Skechers Walk. If anyone's interested, um, it's a great, uh, it's a Skecher Friendship Foundation Walk. It, um, the money raised be, had a benefits, uh, students with, uh, special needs and also the other, the schools within the South Bay. So register, it's a great, uh, cause for all the students. Um, and I also wanted to let you everyone know that, uh, Mr. Nick, Nicky was going to be working on turning the, the water tower orange for our Halloween. And then that we do have the Halloween frolic, which is going to be on Saturday, uh, this, this year instead of the Halloween. So please, um, I, the, we're, we're excited about this and the staff is going to be, um, involved in that. And then I also wanted to let everyone know that, um, uh, the, one of the, our Parks and Recs commissioners, Kelly Watson, is working with the Parks and Recs and all the clubs in town to ensure that the holiday season activities in El Segundo are safe and open for everybody. So if there's any club that wants to get involved, please reach, reach out to either Melissa McCulgan or Kelly Watson with the, um, in the art, the Park, Parks and Recs Commissioner. Um, if you want to get involved, because we really need a lot of hands on deck, because we anticipate especially Candy Cane Lane being very active this year. So, um, we want everybody to help and participate to make sure it's a fun and safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Potempe Matal?
A couple few, a few items on transportation. Uh, the COG will be commenting on, uh, Caltrans is looking at different alternatives for express line routing on the four oh five through the Sepulveda Pass. Um, we have concerns about the absence of both transit and parallel corridors. So if they do that and effectively reduce usage in a lane, how that could affect, uh, all the way back from the pass into the South Bay. Also continuing to work on the local travel network, both as it pertains to aviation in Douglas, but conceivably through Vista del Mar or the bike path to try and tie us in with our non-traditional, uh, vehicle means. Uh, sanitation is tomorrow, something that likely the county sanitation will cover, even though it's not currently agendized, is the smell, uh, over Carson and Torrance, which is, uh, brutal. Um, and that covers a significant part of the region, even though it's not really part of our two districts, uh, for South Bay sanitation. Uh, it is something that is likely to be covered in that. So if there's any significant that ties into us particular, particularly the people covered by, uh, LA sanitation, which are our people east of PCH are paying into that, uh, we'll report out on that. And lastly, point of interest, I had jury duty last week. Uh, and as they go around and poll jurors, as you go through, one of the questions they ask everyone during the voir dire portion is, you know, what's your experience with law enforcement? And everybody there obviously has had an experience with law enforcement. People be positive or negative, they'd ask him what agency, but all three of my fellow jurors who had had their experience was with El Segundo PD, said, no, it was really fair and professional. So look at us. I mean, people, they're, this is their opportunity to get off jury duty, right? What's your experience? And they're, no, no, they were great. One guy said it, he's like, no, they were great. Like, he wanted to say something bad, but he was like, no, they were great. So, hey, good on the PD.
Thank you, sir. I got a quick thing. We had the Southern Cal Association of Governments Regional Council meeting a week before last. We had a really heated, very long meeting about the Southern Cal Green Print, Green Print, which is really a tool of different data la, data layers to provide different government agencies throughout the region, which is six or seven counties in Southern California, to be able to get at environmental considerations, transportation, decision-making information. And, uh, we've decided to pause the implementation of the Southern Cal Green Print to allow additional public input and hearing. And we heard from the Building Industry Association and others that they were very concerned. Then there were also the environmental concerns that were wanting us to move forward. Probably the most contentious meeting I've been in with that group and more to come on that. But ultimately, it'd be a great tool for agencies to access data at different layers throughout the region. And that's all I have. So back to the city attorney.
Thank you, city mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, by way of follow-up, just once again, thank you for the opportunity, for the nice send-off for fighter chief, Chris Donovan. Really appreciate that quality guy. Okay, uh, we do have the one item involving the Grand Avenue Water Main Project. That will be moved to the next, um, council meeting as you had requested earlier. The next council meeting will be on November second. We have a variety of items, uh, on that agenda. Looking at, uh, the items worth noting, review of the aquatic fees. Fire department budget follow-up. We will have that report ready for you. Smokey Hollow on-street parking pilot project finally coming back. We're, we're checking off the list of items on your strategic plan, uh, solely but surely. And then we may have one of the DEI committee study reports, uh, maybe not until the sixteenth, now that I look at that. That's what we're working on at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting. Nine twenty-four. Thank you.